Evening, everyone. I would like to call to order the Elk Grove City Council regular meeting. Today is Wednesday, March 26, 2025. The time is 6:01 PM. Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council is recorded with closed captioning. The recording will be cable cast on Metro Cable Channel 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. The recording will also be video streamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Tonight's meeting replays will be on Friday, March 28 at 1:00 PM, and Monday, March 31, also at 1:00 PM on Metro Channel 14. Once posted, the recordings of this and previous meetings can be viewed on demand at the www.elkgrovecity.org or youtube.com/metrocable14. For members of the participating audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting or on mute when you are not speaking. Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the City Council meetings. City Council requests that you limit your presentations to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular noticed agenda item as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the City Council for more than three minutes. And for those speakers in the audience who wish to address the council, you can find the blue speaker cards, which are at the back of the chamber, and please provide them to Assistant City Clerk Brendan Hager prior to the item. With that, Mayor, I will move into the roll call. And starting with the roll call, I will call out to Councilmember Spees.
President.
Councilmember Brewer.
President.
Councilmember Soon.
Here.
I will note that Vice Mayor Robles is absent.
He's pulling up. He's right there.
He's entered the building. We have the Vice Mayor. So we will note that Vice Mayor Robles has just arrived. And Mayor Singh Allen.
Thank you. All right, next up is our land acknowledgement. I will ask Councilmember Brewer to help read the land acknowledgement, please.
Thank you, Mayor. We honor, respect, and acknowledge Elk Grove's first inhabitants, the Plains Miwok, who lived as sovereign caretakers of this land and these waterways since time immemorial. We commemorate and advocate for their descendants, the Wilton Rancheria Tribe, the only federally recognized tribe in Sacramento County, who endured because of the bravery, resiliency, and determination of their ancestors, tribal members, and leaders.
All right, thank you. Next up is our pledge of allegiance. And if I could ask our educator, retired Mr. Dave Nevis, to help lead us this evening.
Please stand. Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up is our moment of silence. Please join us for a brief moment of silence. All right, thank you. Next up is our approval of the agenda. May I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Next item, closed session.
Under Section 3, the closed session, there are no closed session items on the regular agenda, which will advance us to Section 4, Presentations and Announcements, and the first item being Item 4.1, which is a proclamation recognizing March as Nutrition Month.
Excellent. I would like to call up Sarah Delitt and your guests. And assisting in reading the proclamation is Councilmember Spees.
Hey. Good evening. Thanks for being with us today. So National Nutrition Month is March 2025. And whereas the National Nutrition Month is an annual campaign established in 1973 by the Academy of Nutrition and Dietetics, during the month of March, everyone is invited to learn about making informed food choices and developing healthful eating and physical activity habits. And whereas this year's theme is food connects us, food is a connecting factor for many of us. Food connects us to our cultures, our families, and our friends. Sharing a meal is an opportunity to learn about its preparation, who made it, and where the ingredients are sourced. And whereas health, memories, traditions, seasons, and access can all impact our relationship with food, while these factors influence the foods we eat, the foods we eat also affect our health. And food is a substance by which life is sustained, and the type, the quality, and amount of food that individuals consume each day plays a vital role in their overall health and physical fitness. And whereas there is a need for continuing nutrition education at a wide-scale effort to enhance healthy eating practices. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Elk Grove hereby affirms and proclaims March 2025 as Nutrition Month in the City of Elk Grove and encourages the community to learn, excuse me, to join the campaign and become concerned about their nutrition and the nutrition of others in the hope of achieving optimum health for both today and tomorrow. Thank you. You have some, go ahead.
Yes, please.
No, I mean, I went back to you, meaning you were going to invite them.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. Now, would you like to make some comments?
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Susanna Nye. I am a registered dietitian. I am here with Sarah, who is a dietetic intern. And first of all, I want to thank Elk Grove for being a champion of registered dietitians. As you may be aware, there are approximately 6,000 dietitians in California. I am the past president of California's Dietitians. I live right down the street in Old Town. I am proud to be a registered dietitian. I am also for the world on, have been the vice chair of the Commission of Dietetics, which is their enforcement, and to help dietitians to be ethical. And what I want to share with you is how important dietitians are. There are very few of us, but what we do is we do the least-cost medical nutrition therapy for nutrition, for therapeutic conditions, for diabetes, heart disease, renal, and other types of nutrition-related diseases that can be dealt with therapeutically. And their low-cost, effective measures can help people live healthfully as well as quality of life. So food is the language and also the therapeutic answer whenever possible. So dietitians strive to reduce the cost of medication through therapeutic nutrition for each of these disease states, as well as to promote health and nutrition in promotional types of environments. So I want to thank you for recognizing registered dietitians and those that come up along, and there are very few of us again. We have a star here. Sarah, do you want to say anything?
Yes, thank you so much for your support. I am about to start at the Elk Grove WIC as part of my rotations this year, so I'm very excited to be able to serve the community. And I have already at UC Davis Hospital where most of my rotations, and I've had transplant patients from Elk Grove, cancer patients. And yeah, food is a major part of these diseases and supporting the citizens of Elk Grove, and I greatly appreciate your support. I will also say that California dietitians are like very active in advocacy for California nationwide policies related to nutrition. And Elk Grove is certainly an exemplar of like very high-quality nutrition policy in schools, and that's very admirable coming from nutrition professionals like ourselves. Thank you.
The last thing I want to say is, and I know you know this, but Elk Grove is very multicultural. So what dietitians do is to make sure that the nutrition that they provide is culturally appropriate. And that is critical, because if a food is not culturally appropriate, you are not helping people to live healthy lives. So we cherish Elk Grove as a standard for the nation because we are one of the most culturally diverse places in the United States. So we thank you.
Thank you. Will join us here.
Hi, Darren.
Hi. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thanks for your work. I just looked about the way I.
Oh, yeah, I'm very excited to be here next week.
On both sides.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Grabbing them.
There we go.
A little bit over this way, please.
We got something light in here now.
Here we go. One, two, three. One more time. One, two, three. Thank you.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you, Councilmembers. Thank you.
Thank you for your work.
All right, thank you. Next item is 4.2, Sacramento Area Council of Governments presentation. I'll turn it over to Councilmember Darren Soon to provide the intro to the intro.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I've been serving on SACOG now for several years, and I'm the chair of the 22-city, six-county regional board this year. It's a great honor and privilege to represent Elk Grove in this capacity. It's my honor to introduce James Corliss, our Executive Director of Sacramento Area Council of Governments. Tonight, he's here to talk about the Blueprint 2025. This is the long-range transportation and land use plan for the region. Now, just to be clear, we here are the decision-makers around land use, and every jurisdiction has that authority and power. But we need to think about how all our individual city and county decisions roll up and affect the entire region in the way of how we plan out transportation infrastructure, development. All these things influence economic growth and environmental sustainability. It's especially important to do this because we don't have enough money to fund everything. The money that rolls in, state and federal dollars for transportation projects, is limited, as many folks can imagine. And so being able to make these decisions, these very critical decisions around, again, six counties in 22 cities around the region, it's a very difficult and complex one. And so, again, how we plan, how we develop, all these things matter in the long term. SACOG plays a big role in advocating for communities across this region, both at the state and federal levels. And so they provide critical funding for our projects. So while you're, we'll be hearing for the blueprint, maybe for the first time today. SACOG's been working on this for several years now. And again, this is the second, if you will, second Blueprint 2.0, sometimes we call it, but this is the most recent one. So with that, Mr. Corliss, good to see you here.
Good to see you, Councilmember Soon, Mayor Singh Allen, members of the City Council. Great to be here. I think I'm just going to say, advance the slide and it'll just.
Actually, Mr. Corliss, I'm going to let you drive. So the, there is a drawer. If you just pull that out, it has a keyboard on it, and then you'll find the arrow keys right over to the left.
All right. How about that?
Right. There you are.
Power's in my hands, but really yours. So pleasure to be here. Just want to say it's fantastic to have Elk Grove chair the SACOG Board of Directors. I think that is the first time Elk Grove, Councilmember Soon has chaired the board, and chair is prerogative. The board retreat this year, this fall, will be right here in Elk Grove, District 56. So we're really looking forward to coming down here and showing the entire, the entire region the great successes of Elk Grove and your aspirations for a livable future. I'm just showing you the six-county map here. Councilmember Soon said this really well. One of the things that's very special about our region, but also about our Council of Governments, is every single jurisdiction sits around the SACOG table twice a month. Everyone. Every city from Isleton to the City of Sacramento to Sacramento County to Colfax to Wheatland to Winters, because we can fit 22 cities and six counties around that table. Many regions this big cannot. And so it is that table where a lot of these very difficult decisions come into play. And we wrestle with things like growth and development and traffic and air quality and meeting state carbon and climate goals, as well as now what's happening federally as well. So we start this plan, and this really is a plan we update every four years. It is the plan, as Councilmember Soon said, that really knits together. It starts with all of your general plans. So every land use assumption in here comes straight out of your general plans, but it looks across six counties, 22 cities. It also looks across 25 years. So we're really looking out to the year 2050. And we start with a framework, what you call triple bottom line, should be familiar to all of you here in this jurisdiction, of equity economy environments. So how do we get a more equitable region? How do we actually grow our economy, especially around things like tradable sectors, where we can actually grow wealth and GDP? And how do we protect our environment, clean water and clean air? So we've done more outreach and engagement in this plan cycle than we have ever done before. We've reached more people in every single county and every jurisdiction through multiple means of engagement, whether it's surveys and polls and focus groups in multiple languages. And we've distilled all of those things that we've learned the last two years into these seven sort of themes around, around the plan, around what the public has been saying. And I'm sure this is probably not going to be too much of a surprise for you here. I've looked at some of your polling citywide as well with your residents, right? One of the big things we're hearing back in terms of the future of the region is making sure that we have enough housing. We have enough housing for all income levels and all life stages. There was a big theme around safety and making sure that our streets are safe, we can reduce injuries and fatalities on our, on our road and street and highway network, which are actually trending up. And so, and that we have good transportation options. Here's one of our focus group members and one of the, the quotes that sort of has stuck with us, which is, "The importance of having a safe and clean and robust public transportation system." So this is the survey we did across all six counties. The number one, as I said, number one sort of survey result in terms of challenges for the future, thinking about the next 25 years, is housing, and affordable housing, and the ability to have our kids and our grandkids actually be afford to stay here, followed by crime and public safety, followed by a lack of transportation choices, and followed by traffic congestion. Again, maybe this resonates to those of you here in Elk Grove. So in terms of what we've learned, so we look out, again, 25 years, and we've actually been pretty good in the past on our demographic forecasts and population growth. So again, you may all may be feeling it here, the Sacramento region across our six counties as a metropolitan region is the fastest-growing region in California. So from the 2020 census and since, we are the fastest-growing region. We are the green line on an annual average population growth here in this chart. You can see we're ahead of the California growth rate, and we're ahead of the US growth rate, right? So that's a good thing, and it also comes with its challenges, right, which we have to manage. That, that rate of population increase will slow down over time, as it will for the rest of the state and the rest of the nation, but we will still be above the state average and the national average. What that means is we are going to grow from a region right now across six counties of 2.5 million people to 3.1 million people. That is the size of metropolitan Denver today, which is why we took a delegation of our Board of Directors and others back to Denver last summer to look at the decisions Denver made 25 years ago and see what we could learn from those. I also don't have to tell you that you're, you're also growing remarkably fast right here in Elk Grove, right? You have a population that's increasing, and one of the key parts of this plan is where we have a lot of housing being developed. We want to make sure we have jobs and economic development. So you're in this situation. Placer County and Roseville is in this situation, right? So we want to make sure we support your local efforts here around economic development and bringing the kinds of jobs in here that means that people don't have to commute out of your jurisdiction every day. I'm going to, just in terms of time here, just sort of advance a few slides. We really want to make sure that this plan for the future, the next 25 years, actually has every jurisdiction that literally shows up, so that your local priorities, the things you're working on locally, and that actually contribute to the goals of our region, actually show up here. So things like your Old Town streetscape improvements, the Trails Plan, and the Laguna Creek and regional trail crossing, Project Elevate, getting transit down here, right? We know that's a real high priority. So those kinds of things, we're working with your staff on, so they will literally show up. And I'm going to end on this note, but not to bury the lead. What's in this plan is a strategic plan on growth and infrastructure, but it is critical. So when we go to the state Capitol, we go back to DC, being in this plan is going to help us basically make the case for competitive funding at the state level and the federal level. So again, transportation challenges certainly here, among other places across the region. We are, as Councilmember Soon said, the reality is, we're going to have a very hard time in the immediate. We have to hold on to federal funding and federal grant funding in particular. So being back in DC and working with our congressional delegation, really important. But also in the next five to 10 years, with the gas tax, the state gas tax is going to, is going to be phased out. And so there's a big question about what replaces the gas tax. And that's because vehicles are getting more efficient, we are switching the fleet over, and so those, the revenue is declining sharply. And so there's a talk at the state level about going to what they call a road usage charge you pay by the mile. The longer we wait to do that, the less revenue we're going to have. So we need to be thoughtful. We need to be at the state level and advocate for a replacement for the gas tax that will be fair, but will allow us to keep investing in the transportation needs we have. We need to think about, in addition to capital projects, we also need to think about safety. I mentioned, actually, as a region, one of the things we're not proud of right now is that fatalities and injuries in our region are increasing, and we're actually worse off than some other regions around the state and the nation. We need to think about technology solutions and things like intelligent transportation systems and a way in which we can actually get projects built quicker at lower cost. Okay, I'm going to close here, and I'm happy to answer questions. This is the last year, the last actually six-month stretch of the adoption of this plan. We've been in development for the last two years. We're going to be releasing a draft in May of this year, so we'll have a draft plan for public comment and public review, an environmental EIR document. And the purpose of that EIR is that if a project is in your plan, especially a development project, you shouldn't have to go through as many reviews if it's in the regional plan. That all comes back to the SACOG Board to review the final plan in September, and then, we hope, adoption in November. And it doesn't stop there, right? We are an agency that does a lot of long-range planning, but we don't want to just do planning. We want to implement these plans. We want to help you implement your general plan and a lot of your transportation projects like Camera Road. So we've got a number of programs here we're very excited about. We have a state funding round right now that your staff is working on in terms of transportation projects funded by state funds. Next year, we'll have a federal funding round. Councilmember Soon has been involved in a mega-region effort that we actually have an MOU with the Bay Area and Northern San Joaquin Valley to look at transportation projects that can knit the Northern California mega-region together. And finally, all of your great trail systems that you're trying to build out here, we have a plan to connect every corner of this region with paved biking and walking trails. It'd be a thousand-mile trail network if we could do it, and it would be transformational. So with that, Mayor Singh Allen, you and I talked a little bit about both the opportunities but the challenges ahead. And I would say we have a bipartisan delegation to the state Capitol. We have a bipartisan delegation in Washington DC. And now is more important than ever that we work together and make sure that our, our members of Congress and our state assembly members and senators work across those aisles. And look at that. It's time to be a team. You all look good in purple. I'm very happy to answer any questions, and thanks again for your time.
Great presentation. Thank you. Opening it up for comments, questions. I'll start to the right. Any questions or comments? Yes.
Thank you for the presentation, James. This was really good, and I liked the high-level detail that, that you touched on of how all of this can work together if we work together. But one of the things I was curious about, so in the trip that you made to Denver to really study their region, to see what things they did right as part of their growth to get to their 225,000 and then beyond into the millions, as you look at the Sacramento region, we're in that similar position right now. Did they share what their priorities are and were in terms of transportation, amenities, and just really what they're, what they were looking for in terms of an economy? Was it built on high tech? Was it built on the military? What were, what were they looking at? And did you see similarities that Sacramento could possibly either replicate or improve on?
Yeah, and I'd be happy to share, we actually wrote up a whole series of findings from that trip. One thing is they, they, you know, the DIA Airport, right, moved out of Stapleton a long time ago, and they basically looked at that as an incredible mega-regional asset, right? And that really is. I mean, DIA has accelerated the Denver region, so you've now got international non-stops. I applaud GSEC for doing the same thing here with Sacramento Metro, right? That we have to see that as a regional asset. Super important. When, when Stapleton, the old Stapleton Airport was freed up because of that new airport, but not just Stapleton, an old mall, they actually had a mega mall, which was incredibly exactly the same acres as Sunrise Mall is right now. So we had the mayor of Citrus Heights with us, who are, they are trying to revitalize and re-envision that entire mall, while Denver did it. They actually built a whole new community, mixed-use community with housing and jobs and office to repurpose and rethink like where retail is not working and where it's failing. They, I think, phased a lot of their housing and infrastructure and jobs. They thought a lot about the jobs-housing balance, not just in their downtown core, but through their suburbs. So there's a lot that they did that I do think we can learn from.
Looking to my left here. Any questions, comments? Yes.
More comments. I just want to say thank you for the presentation, and thank you, Darren, for stepping up and for being the chair. For those who don't know, SACOG is super, super important and very crucial for our six counties. That's where the federal government comes down and does that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, go.
Yeah, thank you. So a couple of things. First, James, I thought you might want to give the folks at home and the audience here, what role does SACOG play in affordable housing, in terms of the regional housing needs allocation? So we play an interesting role, which I think, as the Vice Mayor said, you know, not just at the federal level, but a lot of the state stuff comes down through us as a regional entity, right? So one is the regional housing needs allocation arena. I know sometimes that is very challenging at a local level. But that comes through us, but again, the idea that everybody sits around that table, and it will start again in 2026, I believe, for the '27 cycle. So that's coming. That's a zoning law, right? So that's all about zoning. I think the thing that we have heard through our plan and all of our outreach is, the housing crisis in the region is bigger than any one jurisdiction can handle. I will just, I'll be the first to tell you, SACOG will not fix this. We're, we don't have that skill set, but we can convene and we can tackle the, the crisis across jurisdictional boundaries. So I think it's a really important question, how do we not just, how do we get, in addition to zoning, how do we get to production, right? Much like you were thinking about capital A affordable, but also missing middle, right? How do we clear some of those hurdles? How do we work with the legislature? How do we get incentives? So we haven't solved those questions, but they are, they're the first and foremost thing that the public all across communities in the region are saying you have to tackle. Housing and homelessness is the number-one issue. Yeah, thank you. And that's why I just want to give folks an idea of just how massive, like the abroad, I should say, that the topics are very important, right? Transportation, housing, affordable housing. And so, you know, James has a very, very tough job because he's balancing urban cities, rural cities, suburban cities. So James, I want to give you kudos since you're here, and you haven't been here in a very long time. But when you first came here, you, you went to every single city and county in the region to learn about them. And since then, you've started to take us around these tours, and not just urban areas, but suburban areas like Denver, like Baltimore, to learn about the, how these patterns and how people are doing things differently. You mentioned the redevelopment mall. So very tough job you have. Thank you for being here in this presentation. It's a lot of good information.
Thank you, and I'll just conclude also. Thank you for coming to our city. I appreciate you continuing to work with our staff and additionally other regional leaders, particularly in the transportation sector. Thank you for your collaboration and partnerships there, and looking forward to seeing more of that in the coming years.
And just want to congratulate you on a great staff and a great team. We know whenever we're working with your staff, they are top-notch. They know how to go get grants. And also your, your focus on things like Project Elevate in District 56 and the zoo, right, and getting high-capacity transit. We see that, we recognize it, we want to support it, economic development and jobs, right, to bring that to your community. So keep going. We're here to support you, and thank you.
Sounds good.
Thanks.
All right, thank you. All right, we will move on to our next item, which is public comment. And we have three people sign up to speak. We will start with Emily, followed by Jaclyn Canouse. I don't have a last name here, so.
Good evening. I'm reaching out to bring attention to the ongoing harassment and discriminatory treatment we're facing in regard to building a masonry wall along our property, which has become a significant burden on our family's well-being. We are currently experiencing racial profiling within our community, and we're informed by code enforcement that we are being targeted because of our ethnicity. This officer has also mentioned experiencing discrimination as others wrongly assume that they share our ethnic background. This situation is deeply troubling, as we believe it's a.
you continuing to work with our staff, and additionally, other regional leaders, particularly in the transportation sector. Thank you for your collaboration and partnerships there, and looking forward to seeing more of that in the coming years.
And just want to congratulate you on a great staff and a great team. We know whenever we're working with your staff, they are top-notch. They know how to go get grants. And also, your focus on things like Project Elevate in District 56 and the zoo, right, and getting high-capacity transit. We see that. We recognize it. We want to support economic development and jobs, right, to bring that to your community. So, keep going. We're here to support you, and thank you.
Sounds good.
Thanks.
All right, thank you. All right, we will move on to our next item, which is public comment. And we have three people sign up to speak. We will start with Emily, followed by Jaclyn Canous. I don't have a last name here, so.
Good evening. I am reaching out to bring attention to the ongoing harassment and discriminatory treatment we're facing in regard to building a masonry wall along our property, which has become a significant burden on our family's well-being. We are currently experiencing racial profiling within our community, and we're informed by code enforcement that we are being targeted because of our ethnicity. This officer has also mentioned experiencing discrimination, as others wrongly assume that they share our ethnic background. This situation is deeply troubling, as we believe it's a violation of our basic rights to feel safe and secure in our own home. Despite our full compliance with code enforcement regulations, our fence was wrongfully removed, costing us a lot of money and health issues from the stress. When we contacted the code enforcement department for clarification, they explicitly stated that the action was taken due to our race. They further suggested that should we have any concerns, we should consider taking legal action against the city of Elk Grove. We have attempted to address safety concerns on our property by seeking to build a wall along our property line to provide much-needed security and privacy. This is not only to protect our home from constant trash, drug paraphernalia, and dangerous items being thrown onto our property, but also to prevent ongoing threats to our health and safety. Unfortunately, our neighborhood has become an unsafe area, and we've had to regularly clean up items such as glass, used condoms, and other hazardous materials, which is both distressing and dangerous. This issue has escalated to the point where we have lost two dogs due to poisoning. We have filed police reports, but there has been no substantial improvement. We need the ability to build a secure fence that will withstand the unstable soil, as we've had to replace and repair it multiple times due to foundation issues. Our contractor has explained the necessity of building a stable structure, which is consistent with the practices seen in other homes in our area, many of which have built similar walls for privacy and safety reasons. What is particularly concerning is that despite this practice being common in our neighborhood, we're the only household facing resistance, which we believe is indicative of racial discrimination and harassment. The situation has created a hostile environment where we feel marginalized and unsafe. We kindly ask for your understanding and support in addressing this matter fairly and without bias. We seek the ability to proceed with our fence installation, ensuring the safety and security of our home and family. We trust that our concerns will be addressed promptly, and that steps will be taken to ensure that discrimination and harassment no longer affect us.
All right, thank you for your comments. We cannot provide any feedback to you right now, because this is public comment. I will either direct you to staff and encourage you to reach out to me. I don't know the facts of this situation, but feel free to reach out to me directly, and I can try to help navigate. But if there's a staff member that's available, Christopher Jordan there can meet with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One more thing.
I'm sorry. You can sign up to speak.
We are on the same page.
Yeah, but the time's up.
Okay.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right, next up is Jaclyn Canous, followed by Juan Fernandez.
Good evening. At the last meeting on the 12th, I posed a couple of questions, and I'll review that. Do Elk Grove citizens speak at the city council meetings only to vent? Are my questions and concerns reviewed or delegated out, or was nothing done? Expressing respect, a follow-through, and apprising citizens of the speaker's time and effort would benefit us all. I am here tonight to say thank you in appreciation of the city, and especially, there's a couple of people that I would like to point out. And one is Kevin Spence and Jeff Werner. Jeff got ahold of me before the meeting was even over last time, and I've been in touch with him. And Jose Mendez. And I really appreciate the quick turnaround of the response and the respect shown me and my concerns for Elk Grove. So, thank you very much. Kevin?
Thank you. Juan Fernandez?
Along those lines. Good evening. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I've spoken here before, and I've asked for your help in addressing a quality-of-life issue with regard to nuisance noise. I realized I've asked for your help, and tonight, I stand before you to thank you for assistance in gaining some relief in that situation. While much of our government currently seems to be dysfunctional, I want to take this moment to thank my city councilmember Rod Burr, and Jason Bearman, thank you, and especially Captain Ryan Elmore of the Elk Grove Police Department, for helping demonstrate the government can be functional and accountable. My family and I literally sleep better at night due to your direct and positive influences in our life. After much collaboration with Captain Elmore and guidance from Mr. Bearman, my situation has vastly improved. However, I encourage you to support Captain Elmore in his procurement, in his plan to procure technology to record and confirm nuisance noise. A portable recording device will reduce the manual effort currently needed to confirm nuisance noise, and thereby release animal control officers from having to be there to personally witness the nuisance noise event, especially after hours. Thank you again, and I look forward to continuing to be a resident of and a servant to the city of Elk Grove.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez. That is my final speaker for public comment. I will close the public comment opportunity and move on to our next item, which is our city manager's report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council, Jason Bearman, your city manager, happy to report on a few items this evening. First of all, Sacramento Sierra Building and Construction Trades Council and people working together are taking it to the streets for a unique career fair and block party this Friday, March 28, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at District 56. And attendees will have a chance to talk with representatives from 28 local construction union affiliates, and meet with construction companies, government agencies, schools, and public utilities with job openings. Anyone is able to attend this event free of charge. Second item, I'd like to congratulate our Public Works Department for achieving the top award for the League California Cities for Outstanding Local Streets and Roads Project Awards competed against cities all across the state, came away with the number-one overall award. They were awarded for the recognition of their surface treatment project on roadways, cutting-edge, cost-effective techniques, extending the payment life, improving safety, and enhancing public access while staying on budget and minimizing disruptions to our community. So I want to give our Public Works team a big shout-out for this well-deserved To improve accessibility and ensure ADA compliance, curb ramps across the city are being upgraded. Work is underway and will continue through the end of May. Crews will be out Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, with adjusted hours of 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM near schools and on major roads. Expect minor road delays and temporary pedestrian detours. Our Animal Services Team is celebrating National Adoption Week by waiving fees for adoptable animals at their shelter and at local events. They'll be bringing adoptable pets to Pets Mart on Laguna Boulevard this Saturday, March 29, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. You can view adoptable pets and learn more on the city's website. One of the city's largest run events will take place this Sunday, March 30, the 14th Annual Kaiser Permanente Running of the Elk Grove Start and Finish at District 56. Race activities begin at 8:00 AM, and road closures and detours around District 56 will be in effect until noon. Proceeds benefit the Elk Grove Youth Sports Foundation. View traffic details and how you can register for the fun event on the city's website. The Parda's Housing Complex is opening its first phase this summer, and a new housing lottery has opened for 96 modern, energy-efficient apartments for individuals and families earning 30% to 80% of the area median income. Details, a link to eligibility requirements, and a form to enter the lottery can be found on the city's social media platforms. Application for the lottery for units is available through Monday, March 31. Recruitment is open for positions on the Diversity and Inclusion Commission, Historic Preservation Committee. These are non-paid volunteer-appointed positions for Elk Grove residents. Anyone interested in either of these positions have until Wednesday, April 2nd, to apply. And the final item is, the Recycling and Waste Team is bringing back their compost giveaway, which was a great success just a month ago. And this time, it will be at Elk Grove Park, 9950 Elk Grove Forum Road, next weekend, April 12 through the 13, between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM. For this free self-serve event, bring your own containers, buckets, bags, or even a truck bed and a shovel to load up on free nutrient-rich compost. And that concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions the council might have.
All right, thank you for that excellent report. Any questions or comments to the left? Yep, please.
I'm sure you'll all join me in saying thank you very much to our Public Works, and congratulations. You know, riding on roads that are nice is something that we do here in Elk Grove, and I don't know that everybody appreciates it every day, but we certainly should. And it's more, Public Works is just more than streets, right? Drainage and all sorts of things. And, you know, it would be a lot less comfortable in Elk Grove if we didn't have a fantastic Public Works team. So I want to say thank you very much to your team.
You're here, for sure. Thank you. All right, we will go on to our next item, which is our consent calendar. At this time, I will open up public comment. Nobody has signed up to speak. I'll close the public comment opportunity and look for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item.
That'll take us to Section 8, our public hearings. And the first item is 8.1, which is a public hearing to consider funding recommendations for the fiscal year 2025-26 Community Development Block Grant and Community Service Grant Programs, and provide direction on the 2025-2030 Consolidated Plan priorities.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilmembers. I am Alicia Tutt, Management Analyst in Housing and Public Services Division. The item I have before you tonight is our annual discussion on how you would like to allocate the Community Development Block Grant and Community Service Grant Funds for the next fiscal year. As you are aware, the city receives Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG, funding from HUD each year, and the priorities for these funds are outlined in our five-year consolidated plan, which we are updating this year. CDBG funds must primarily benefit low-income individuals and can only be used for specific eligible activities. A limited portion of funding is available for public service. In 2024-25 fiscal year, the city also began receiving direct federal income funding from HUD through the Home Investment Partnership Program, or HOM. While this funding is not part of the nonprofit grant process, it's mentioned here because these program priorities will also be included in the five-year consolidated plan. The Community Service Grant Program supports nonprofits that serve Elk Grove residents. Historically, council has allocated these funds from the general fund for this program. This funding is more flexible than CDBG and can cover a wide range of funding requests, with the exception of event sponsorships, which have a separate grant program. The council will review funding recommendations for that program next month. While not part of a specific grant program, tonight's funding recommendations also include the use of some Measure E funding. The Elk Grove community identified key priorities for Measure E spending, including addressing homelessness, which has been a longstanding focus of the city's CDBG and CSG programs. As a result, when evaluating applications and making funding recommendations for the coming year, Measure E funding was also considered for those activities aimed at addressing homelessness. To receive CDBG and HOM funding, the city must develop and submit a consolidated plan to HUD. This five-year plan sets goals and strategies for allocating these funds. And a key component of the plan is the Action Plan, which is completed annually and details the budget and specific projects for each year. As we develop a new consolidated plan, staff has conducted a good deal of outreach in the community this year, and will continue over the next few weeks to identify Elk Grove's highest priority needs. Outreach efforts so far have included participation in large community events, like the Dickens Fair and the Multicultural Festival, discussions with the Disability Advisory Committee and Youth Commission, and engagement with clients at the food bank, a weekend meal program, and our local shelter. Staff has also held conversations with local nonprofits, met with various city departments and divisions, conducted outreach at several affordable housing complexes, and hosted a public meeting specifically focused on the consolidated plan. Through our outreach efforts so far, we've identified several high-need priorities, community needs, including affordable housing, housing and services for individuals experiencing homelessness, accessibility improvements such as the curb ramp program that we just heard about, direct emergency financial assistance programs, affordable childcare, expanded mental health services, reliable and accessible internet and cellular service, and services for specific populations. We plan to release the draft consolidated plan for review in mid-April, and before doing so, we also want to include any input that council provides this evening on what you see as the highest priority needs in the community. For the next program year, our estimated CDBG allocation is 982,758. This estimate is based on level of funding from our current 24-25 program year. As you know, federal allocations have not been released from HUD at this time. Up to 20% of these funds may be used for administration and for housing activities, though the city plans to allocate only 15% of that towards those. Federal regulation cap also caps funding for public services at 15% of that amount, and the city has historically used the full 15% for public services. In addition to the new funding allocation, we are recommending the reallocation of almost 261,000 in unspent funds from prior years, resulting from projects that either didn't complete, didn't either move forward, or did not fully use their allocated funding, along with over 88,000 in program income that we have received from loan repayments through our home repair program. Federal regulations restrict the use of the reallocated funds to capital projects. However, 15% of the program income may be allocated towards program services, so that amount is included in recommendations tonight. Additionally, one other regulation with the CDBG funds is that they cannot be used to replace recent local government funding, so we must ensure that any activities previously funded with local dollars are not funded through CDBG funding. Our anticipated home allocation is just over 359,000, and as a reminder, these are not included in tonight's nonprofit grant programs being reviewed. New for fiscal year 25-26, the CSG program, or Community Service Grant Program, has been restructured into two funding categories. First is the CSG Traditional, and then the CSG Capital Projects. The traditional funding programs activities that directly benefit Elk Grove residents, enhancing their quality of life, community engagement, and local services. CSG Capital Projects provides one-time funding for capital improvements, equipment, or supplies that support the mission and operations of eligible entities serving Elk Grove residents. The city has tentatively earmarked 462,313 for CSG Traditional program, reflecting a slight increase from the previous year. This allocation is based on 0.5% of the prior year's budgeted general fund expenditures. Additionally, staff proposes allocating up to $100,000 for new CSG Capital Projects category, preventing additional funding that was not previously available. With this expansion, the total available funding under the CSG program will be $562,313. And finally, we have included $106,352 of Measure E funding in the recommendations for activities that address or prevent homelessness. So the city released a joint application in January for the CDBG and CSG programs, and funding availability was announced through the city's website, weekly updates, and social media postings. Several notices were also sent via email to our extensive nonprofit list. A technical assistance webinar was held in January, with an archived video being posted on the city's website for those who are unable to attend on the scheduled date. Using one application, nonprofits could apply for CDBG and/or CSG funding for each activity. There was no limit on the number of applications that could be submitted per application. And then, applications were due in mid-February. We received a total of 42 applications for both nonprofits and city departments for a wide variety of activities. The total funding request exceeded $5 million, which always makes it a tough challenge for us, given that we have limited funding available. After determining if an applicant was eligible for funding, the applications were reviewed by an interdisciplinary team based on factors such as the impact they would have on the Elk Grove community and residents, and high-need populations, feasibility of implementation within the time period established, budget reasonableness, if the organization has the administrative and financial capacity to implement the program, and if the project had matched funding, either in kind or cash. During the review process, applicants were given the opportunity to provide and clarify aspects of their application. So in your packet, you have a way more detailed list of all the funding requests received, and short descriptions of each proposed activity. The next several slides represent those applications that are being recommended for funding. The recommended capital projects for funding this year is our annual citywide curb ramp improvement project, which was submitted by our Public Works Improvement Project, which was submitted by our Public Works Department. This program focuses on reconstructing non-complaint EDA ramps throughout the city to improve Next are the CDBG Public Service Recommendations. So an asterisk next to the funding total denotes that these two projects also are being recommended for funding either under CSG or Measure E to supplement these amounts. These recommendations, all of them, are for returning grantees that have been funded two or more years in the past, so they're all organizations that we have worked with previously under CDBG. As for our CSG Traditional Recommendations, the next three slides are covered on these. Again, you will see a lot of familiar organizations this year that have received funding previously. Under the CSG Traditional Program, the maximum amount eligible to be awarded to any single organization in a given year is $100,000. We are recommending funding for a variety of organizations, offering public service assistance to the homeless, persons with disabilities, low-income families, victims of domestic violence, youth and senior programs, animal services, and as well as support for theater and arts programs. Of the 19 nonprofits recommended for funding under CSG Traditional, three are new grantees to the city under this program. So for this slide, it's just a few I wanted to highlight. The Chicks in Crisis is represented a 40% increase from their prior year funding, or their current year. Elk Grove Community Foundation is a new organization funded under this program. And then Elk Grove Community Garden and Learning Center is a returning, they've been gone for a couple of years, but they're returning. On our next slide, the few I want to point out, the two new ones, Elk Grove Musical Theater Company is a new organization being recommended for funding under this program, as well as Goals Growth-Oriented Adaptive Learning Skills Program. And then Meals on Wheels, you'll note, was mentioned here, as well as in CDBG. And then on this slide, all of these organizations are returning organizations to the CSG program. For the new CSG Capital Projects Recommendations, we are recommending these three organizations. Two have been receiving funding under CSG for other programs, and then Laguna Creek High School Band Booster Club is new to the city as a funded entity. And then finally, for Measure E, our recommendations for the two programs that are addressing homelessness are Food Bank Utility Assistance Program, and this program, the funding has been increased significantly from prior years due to the high level of need in that program, and then Waking the Village Youth Transitional Shelter. So our next steps. After tonight's public hearing, staff will release the CDBG draft of the 2025-2030 Consolidated Plan for Public Comment from April 14th to May 14th, and then return to council on May 14th to formally adopt those recommendations. Once the final allocation is released from HUD, those funding recommendations may need to be revised as necessary if that is before or after that date, and before that, the con plan has gone out. The CSG and Measure E allocations will be adopted as part of the annual city budget process, and then, once those are all formalized, staff will work with individual grantees to write scope of work and budget for incorporation into a formal grant agreement, and funding will be available beginning July 1st, 2025. So that concludes my presentation for tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
All right, excellent. This time, I will go ahead and open up the public, or declare that the public hearing is now open, and open up public comment opportunity. We have several folks signed up. We will start with Dr. Simon Singer, followed by Dave Nevis.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council members. My name is Simon Singer, and I'm the Chair of the Elk Grove Food Bank Board of Directors. I'm here on behalf of our Executive Director, Marie Jokino, and our 8,000 clients to thank the council and the city for its support of the food bank. Over the past 20 years, it has been an honor for the food bank to partner with the city to serve our most vulnerable citizens who face food insecurity. We are grateful for the vision and support of the city as we work together to meet the needs of our community. As you are aware, the future appears to be even more challenging than the past. If USDA funding support and other federal grant funding is reduced, we will attempt to direct more of our limited resources to meeting the basic needs of our clients. These are challenging times, especially for our over 2,000 senior clients who face a dire future in their so-called golden years. These individuals worked all their lives, many in low-wage jobs, that barely allowed them to make ends meet. Barbara Erlenreich wrote a book back in 2001 titled Nickled and Dimed: On Net Not Getting By in America on the Sad State of the Working Poor. Regrettably, the fortunes of the working poor has not improved since 2001. That said, we rely even more on assistance from the city for the public-facing component of our Kent Street facility. Even though we have surrounded our facility with a high-quality fence, vandals have repeatedly tried to break in through our pedestrian entrance gate, the repairs of which have cost $8,000 twice, and it has broken again. Since we submitted our proposal, our main entrance gate has been damaged and is in need of repairs. We thank you for recommending the $35,000 in APA funding. In the event there is any funding remaining in the APA pool, we would greatly appreciate an additional $20,000 so we can make the necessary repairs to our main gate and the pedestrian gate. Our staff is committed to having all the necessary repairs completed in accordance with APA guidelines. Once again, thank you for your continued support and for a consideration of the APA request. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Dave Nevis, followed by Gina Tilke.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. I am honored to be here tonight to represent Elk Grove's heart, which is the Homeless Assistance Resource Team, and to express our sincere appreciation for consideration for our grant, to keep our organization functioning in the level that it has been. Our grant request is to keep funding an administrative assistant who works for us, who keeps our phones going, our emails going, and lines up people with other agencies, and helps us significantly. That individual is an employee with the Community Services District and has been invaluable over the last few years in terms of making our meetings documentable and getting the message out and doing the work that he does. On top of that, Elk Grove Heart has appreciated the support and the relationship that we've had with the city of Elk Grove for the number of years that we have. Your support for our organization and your support for people experiencing homelessness, I don't think can be compared to any other county or city that I've ever heard of. You care about our citizens, and as two of our citizens already commented tonight, you respond when people are asking for help. You have been there for us, and Heart will be there for our people that are experiencing homelessness. So once again, thank you on behalf of an organization that I'm so very proud to be a part of. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Gina Tilke, followed by Kara Lack.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council members, good evening. My name is Gina Tilke, and I'm the local program coordinator for X Hope. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, for me to have this opportunity to speak to you tonight, and thank you to the city of Elk Grove for your ongoing support of our mission over the past few years. Your investment has played a vital role in helping us grow our reach and deepen our impact among some of the most vulnerable youth in our city. In 2022, recognizing the growing need in our community, we took a leap of faith and secured our first physical location, a 950-square-foot space on East Stockton Boulevard. This space allowed us to serve more families and offer more consistent support. In just three short years, our impact has grown by nearly 150%, with 748 Elk Grove youth served at least once in 2024 through our local programs. Our close partnership with Elk Grove Unified School District, along with other local organizations, businesses, and community members, has played an instrumental role in identifying needs and supporting our efforts. The backbone of our mission is not only to provide essential items, but also build connections with the youth and their caregivers, creating moments that restore dignity, offer belonging, and plant seeds of hope. Our current opportunities include caring for kids, kits, and community closet, extracurricular and activity support, back-to-school pickup experiences, scholarships, summer bash and holiday bash outreach experiences, and our Say Yes to the Dress formalware opportunities. As demand for our programs grew, it became increasingly difficult to serve effectively in our small space. We knew that to continue offering meaningful relational support, we needed a larger, more functional facility. We're excited to share that just two weeks ago, we moved into a new 4,500-square-foot location off of Elkmont Way. This space gives us room to grow and dream, a warehouse for storing and distributing essentials, a welcoming office space, a future classroom for enrichment and life skills programming, and an outdoor area we hope to activate for community markets and seasonal outreach opportunities. However, with this expanding growth comes a significant increase in facility and operational costs. This is why we respectfully ask for reconsideration regarding the 2025 CSG funding allocations recommended for X Hope. As we step into this next chapter, increased operational support is critical to sustaining and expanding our work and continuing to show up for youth impacted by foster care, homelessness, and economic hardship. Thank you for your time and for believing in our mission. I would like to personally invite you to visit our new facility at 9096 Elkmont Way. Thank you.
All right, next up is Kara Lack, followed by Shelley Elrod.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council members. My name is Kara. I am here as a parent representing Musical Mayhem Productions. My daughter is 11 and about to perform in her 27th musical at MMP, including multiple summer camps. She's there tonight, as she is every single day. I would like to extend our deepest gratitude to the city for awarding us funds from this grant, which will enable MMP to provide free tickets to our productions to schools and nonprofits. Live theater holds immense power in shaping young minds. It offers more than just entertainment. It fosters creativity, empathy, and critical thinking. For students experiencing live theater opens doors to new worlds, introduces them to diverse perspectives, and encourages them to express themselves in ways that they may have never considered before. I am also a volunteer for the arts program at my daughter's school, where many of our students face financial barriers and would benefit from the tickets provided by MMP through this grant. For those students, access to cultural experiences like live theater can be life-changing. This grant makes it possible for students to see stories come to life on stage, sparking their imagination and inspiring them to pursue their own passions, whether in the arts or other fields. For that, we are incredibly thankful. We ask for your continued support of live theater programs in our community. These programs do so much more than just entertain. They offer young people a chance to develop important life skills, including creativity, teamwork, communication, and confidence. By investing in youth theater, we provide a safe space for children and teenagers to express themselves and build relationships with peers who share their interests. These programs help shape the leaders of tomorrow, fostering not only artistic talent, but also critical thinking and resilience. Now more than ever, our youth need these outlets to grow, learn, and thrive. I urge you to continue supporting live theater in our city so that we can ensure every young person has access to the power of the arts. Finally, I'd like to invite you all to come see one of our upcoming productions. There are shows performing every weekend in April, including Aladdin Kids, a pilot production of Once Upon a One More Time Junior, and The Drowsy Chaperone Junior. You can visit mmpkids.com for show info and times, or reach out to any of us, and we'd be happy to help you. On behalf of Musical Mayhem Productions and the students that they serve, thank you again for supporting the arts and making these opportunities possible. Your investment in our youth today will undoubtedly help shape the leaders, artists, and thinkers of tomorrow. Thank you for your time and your ongoing commitment to our community.
Thank you. Next up is Shelley Elrod, followed by Jennifer Marcello. And I have Michelle Bustamante listed next to each other, so I don't know if you're speaking together or separately. So we'll address that when we get there. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight on behalf of MMP. And I have an 18-year-old daughter who's been very involved in MMP. I'm sad this is her last year, as she's 18 and a senior, and will be moving away in the fall. She started doing shows at MMP in sixth grade, and at that time, she was very shy and content with being in the back row of any production, and I never would have imagined her performing in front of hundreds of people now. She's gone from being in the last row to being cast in some leading roles. Last year, she was Sandy in Grease, and I was blown away by how much she has grown in the last six years. Some of her elementary school teachers came to her performance and could not believe that this was the same girl that they taught back in elementary school. MMP has really brought my daughter out of her shell. They are building confidence in our youth by encouraging them to take risks in a safe environment. Musical theater provides opportunity to make new friends, inspire creativity, boost self-esteem, and strengthen social skills. Being part of a cast fosters teamwork, broadens communication skills, and helps kids develop respect for all types of people. Many of the MMP kids go on to pursue theater in college, but even those that don't have developed skills that make them confident speakers and team leaders. MMP is asking the city to cover the cost of tickets to be donated to local nonprofits and schools, and this is important because the kids work so hard to put on productions. We want them to have a packed house cheering them on. The larger the audience, the more excited they are about performing. Some people don't know about the program, or maybe attending show is simply not in their budget. Exposure to performing arts is something everyone should be allowed to experience, so thank you so much for including MMP in the allocation. And if you have never been to a performance, we encourage you to come, as the previous speaker spoke about. There are shows almost every weekend. Most of the shows are held here locally at Casuna Oaks High School, but some of them are downtown at the 24th Street Theater, and if you come, you won't be disappointed. It's definitely something that you have to experience to get the full picture of how much work these kids put in in a short period of time to put these shows together, and they do a great job, from, you know, learning their roles, to designing the costumes, building the stages, everything. So thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Jennifer Marcello, are you speaking separately? Because I have Michelle Bustamante, but I have you together. Are you just...
We're good together.
You're good together? You still get three minutes, then, if it's a together situation? All right. I offered. You had the opportunity for six, but let's go.
Thank you. Mayor and Council, good evening. I'm Jennifer Marcello, and I'm the Director of Programs for Meals on Heels, Sacramento County. I'm being joined tonight by my colleague, Michelle Bustamante, who is our Director of Home Delivered Meal Operations. It's so appropriate that you just made March National Nutrition Month for the city of Elk Grove, because that is so near and dear to our heart and our mission. But I digress. Together, we're here to express our gratitude for the staff's recommendation of full funding of our grant requests for this coming year. The proposed award of $84,000 will allow us to serve 21,000 meals to 184 senior participants in the city of Elk Grove. This funding is not just about meals. It's about nourishment, dignity, and ensuring that our seniors remain connected to their community. With your support, we can continue providing not only essential nutrition, but also the human connection and care that make a real difference in their lives.
So I have a story to share. It's a sad one, but it really kind of illustrates how important the connection is between our drivers, our program, and the participants that we serve. Every week, Meals on Wheels driver George made his regular delivery to Sam, a participant he'd come to know well. Over time, he learned about Sam's family, his beloved pets, and even his daily routines. This time, something felt off. When Sam didn't answer the door, George grew concerned. The television was on, there was a stack of unopened mail on the porch, and signs that Sam had been home, but he hadn't stepped outside in a while. His gut told him something's really wrong. Luckily, on the route sheet, there was a daughter's phone number, and so... Luckily, on the route sheet, there was a daughter's phone number, and so George quickly called her and explained the situation. She was alarmed and guided him through the process of entering the home through the back door so he could check on him. George found Sam collapse on the floor, barely responsive. Without hesitation, George called 911 and stayed by Sam's side as they waited for emergency services. Weekly, Sam reached out for George's hand, and he whispered to him, "Please call my family. I'm not going to make it." Fighting back a motion, George used his work phone and set up a three-way call connecting Sam to his two daughters. As they tearfully said their goodbyes, George stood by, offering quiet support in this heartbreaking moment. Minutes later, the emergency responders arrived and took Sam to the hospital. Sam survived the night, and long enough for his family to arrive to say goodbye in person. In the days that followed, we received heartfelt calls from his family thanking George and the Meals on Wheels program. So we want to thank you for your support and supporting moments like that.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that story.
Thank you for your investment in our program.
Thank you. Next up is Rachel and Lily. I've got another duo. You speaking together, or just moral support someone?
Moral support.
Okay, excellent.
Hi, thank you so much for giving us the time to talk. So we are also with Musical Mayhem Productions. This is Lily. I am Rachel. And Lily learned about MMP through her older brother. So she started as a patron in the seats watching the arts, and as she grew to about three years old, decided she wanted to get up there on stage herself. And she has been acting with them since 2000, sorry, since she was five years old. COVID kind of hit a little bump in that one. But we're here to say thank you for giving the opportunity for more students to participate in MMP as patrons, as students in seats, and to get exposed to what a wonderful community of theater is. Through theater, Lily has learned to sing and act and dance, and has really built self-confidence and a new group of friends that I know she'll have through her lifetime. We have, how many friends have we drug into MMP? We have so many friends now that are involved in MMP after coming and seeing the shows. And so the money that we are able to use to get more kids in the seats who aren't traditionally exposed to this is very exciting. MMP's motto is creating awesome adults, one musical at a time, and this gives us the opportunity to hopefully create more awesome adults. In fact, MMP annually creates approximately, or contributes to creating 1,400 awesome adults in the making as they are able to perform on stage. So with that being said, I know you've heard that we have lots of shows coming up. Lily will be in Aladdin. There's actually seven shows in the next six weeks coming up through MMP. So again, thank you for the opportunity to keep people coming to see us.
Next up is Heidi Kaiser, followed by Alma Wilcox.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. I'm Heidi Kaiser, Director of Government Affairs for Child Action. I'd like to comment around the plans for the 2025-2030 Consolidated Plan. Child Action has empowered Sacramento County families through early care and education for almost half a century. Last year, we administered over $127 million in childcare subsidies, directly supporting almost 9,000 families and over 16,000 children, many here in Elk Grove. We partner with local childcare providers to expand access to affordable, quality childcare, licensing support, capacity building resources, and training for early educators. Elk Grove's own community development block grant outreach highlighted childcare as a critical need addressed. Child Action is uniquely equipped to address. Already, millions of our annual funding is going towards uplifting Elk Grove children, families, and educators, and we think it's important to deepen that impact here. We're already livability's top place to live in California, and I say "we" because after living and working everywhere from Washington DC to London, I chose to raise my family here in Elk Grove. This is where families come to thrive. Let's ensure every family here keeps thriving. Child Action is eager to collaborate with you, to tailor solutions that sustain Elk Grove's prosperity. And Elk Grove Sacramento County is already a model for California and the communities that value our children. So we're excited for the day when we serve as the national prototype. I look forward to discussing with staff how Child Action can inform this work. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next up is Alma Wilcox, followed by Carol Kahn.
Hi, good evening. On behalf of Alchemist CDC's CalFresh at Farmers Markets Program at the Laguna Gateway Center Farmers Market, thank you to the city and the council for funding this program year after year. In 2024, we facilitated the distribution of more than $180,000 in combined CalFresh benefits and market match incentives at this farmers market alone. This is a 40% increase from the year prior, and program usage is only continuing to grow. This means that every dollar you invested into this program last year facilitated $13 in purchasing power for fresh, locally grown fruits and vegetables. We are confident that your renewed funding in 2025 will maintain this level of impact. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Carol Kahn, followed by Shelley Kessin.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Vice Mayor and Council members. I'm Carol Kahn. I'm the Executive Director of Project Sentinel. We're a fair housing, comprehensive fair housing center that operates in the South Bay, the Peninsula, Sacramento County, and Stanislaw County. By way, we're extremely grateful for the continuing support, almost a decade going now, with the City of Elk Grove, not to mention other cities and the county of Sacramento. By way of a reminder about the nature of fair housing work, which is under incredible scrutiny right now with HUD and DOGE, and we're fighting for our every last dime of funding right now. We provide services to affirmatively further fair housing, which is a term of art that means that in consolidated plans and housing elements, we're going to make provisions to fight housing discrimination. There are many protected classes under the rubric of fair housing law that protect some of our most vulnerable citizens in our communities. Those are veterans, seniors, survivors of domestic violence who might be legally evicted because of the actions of their abuser, persons with disabilities, people of color, LGBTQ, and so on. On average, the Project Sentinel investigates about 400 cases a year. Approximately 30 to 40% of those investigations reveal evidence substantiating a claim of discrimination. Housing discrimination complaints are investigated by testing, surveys, and document review, and the majority of the meritorious complaints are either resolved through conciliation and mediation and/or through enforcement, which usually engages the California Civil Rights Department. In closing, and as we near the Fair Housing Month in April, I wish to again express my support for the ongoing wisdom of the council to continue to fund fair housing activity. It is absolutely a remedy to our housing crisis and our homelessness problem, which I know are also priorities. I think I'll leave it at that and answer any questions if you have them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Shelley Kessin, followed by Michelle Campbell.
Good evening. I'm Shelley Kessin, also here on behalf of Musical Mayhem Productions, MMP. My son Charlie started with MMP in fifth grade. He's a junior this year at Pleasant Grove High School, so I know firsthand what a bright spot MMP is in our community. But beyond my own personal experience, more than 1,400 kids each year go through an MMP program, whether it's their shows, academies, workshops. In addition, MMP puts on 22 different shows each year, employs 17 people, and just this week, more than 2,000 elementary school students are going to have the opportunity to see Junie B. Jones firsthand. So MMP casts a broad net within our community. And I will say that beyond simply instilling an appreciation for the arts, what the kids learn as part of MMP will last a lifetime. Confidence building, public speaking, teamwork, discipline, time management, and then also a bit of resilience when they don't quite get that part that they were so excited about. All of these things will follow them throughout their lives and serve them very well. So I want to commend you for supporting MMP and theater among our youth within our community. It's vitally important. And not to be outdone by my fellow theater moms, I want to invite you all to a show. We would love to have you join us. You will see pure joy onstage, and I hope you would be delighted by your role in that and your support of that. Thank you.
All right. Next up is Michelle Campbell, followed by Mark Hedlund.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the council. I'm Michelle Campbell. I teach theater arts at Katherine L. Albionni Middle School here in Elk Grove Unified School District. And I'm here to speak on support of two local programs who have applied for community service grants, Musical Mayhem Productions, MMP, as you've heard, and Elk Grove Musical Theater Company. Both of these theater programs are near and dear to my heart. Both programs have assisted productions at my school through the loan of sets, props, and costumes, and they make my students very happy. Musical Mayhem has requested a grant to provide free tickets to local schools and nonprofits. As you know, audience opportunities improve quality of life for Elk Grove citizens. If children are going to shows, parents are going to shows, it's a great thing for the whole family. Audience members learn empathetic listening, critical thinking, and connection with others as they learn about others through story. Audience members show support and appreciation for the arts and for their peers who take risks up on stage. There are fewer and fewer opportunities for field trips and in-school productions and performances. Students don't get to learn how to be an audience member at school because we just don't have the time with the rest of the curriculum and the schedules that we're trying to fit in. Tickets for evening and weekend shows allow students to go with their families during outside-of-school time, and MMP has provided blocks of tickets for my students to attend shows. So not only do they get to learn to be a performer and audience member at school, they get to practice it out there in the community. Elk Grove Musical Theater Company, EGMTC, has requested funding for continuing their theater nonprofit and volunteers. There is an entirely volunteer program. My students love the program, just as they do MMP. And they're also looking for support to bring shows to Elk Grove. More and more often, both MMP and EGMTC have to go to Sacramento, West Sacramento, or Rancho Cordova to find theater space. We have a very robust theater arts program in Elk Grove Unified, but we're using our theater spaces regularly. We need a community theater space, and so that's something that I would hope that you would consider in the future. Since both of those productions go outside, families and audience members often go out to lunch, dinner, or dessert to celebrate, meaning that their dollars are going to those other cities. A performing arts space in Elk Grove would be super helpful. Thank you for recommending CSG grant funds for both MMP and EGMTC. Theater kids are worth your investment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Mark Hedlund, followed by Angie Wangsgard.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council members. I'm here to thank you for your ongoing support for all the dozens of great nonprofits that we have that help this community thrive. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of Uplift People of Elk Grove, and your support has been invaluable for us. But just in general, I know that it's very important for you and it's very important for our community to keep funding and supporting these various nonprofits that help those in need in our community. As many of you know, Uplift is a nonprofit organization providing support in a community-style setting to individuals and families who face a variety of forms of financial and life skills poverty. With classes, group discussions, and goal-setting instruction, Uplift offers resources to participants seeking the skills to overcome financial poverty, manage health problems, and to face the challenges of aging, acquire parenting skills, and much more. It's an opportunity for our clients, individuals, and families to become part of a supportive community. They learn about stretching their income, dealing with conflicts, and improving their health, among other things, while developing positive relationships. We provide a family meal and childcare during our weekly meetings to allow them the freedom to work on creating a more abundant life, and this is all provided free of charge. We recently asked some of our clientele, some of our participants, what Uplift means to them, and I'd like to share with you a couple of quotes from them. One single mom said, "We talk a lot about finances and budgeting, and I recently got my first, my very own first place. And so I've learned how to adapt, pay my bills, how to create a new lifestyle of having stability in my own home, and how to make it lasting, how to take care of it." Another participant says, "I've been able to set some goals that I never really looked at that hard. That goal setting is really important because it helps keep me on task." Another client says, "My kids know this is a stable place where we go and work on our lives." One of our volunteers said, "I came to Uplift because I wanted to give back to my community and help people in need. But once I got here and became involved, I realized that we all suffer poverty in some part of our lives. Turns out, I get more from Uplift than I give." And another one of our clients, who's a single mom, who has really praised Uplift for really helping her out, wrote a short poem, and I'm not going to read the whole poem, but I'll give you a couple of excerpts. "I've gone from homeless to housing, isolated to invited, hungry to fed, strangers to friends, glances to hugs, understand my before, motivate my after. No longer will defeat have me circling the same street, waiting for someone to come and save me. I'm learning how to save myself. I know I don't have to be a doormat to be kind." So thank you again for your support.
Thank you. Next up is Angie Wangsgard, followed by Nettie Fisher.
I stand before you today as the President of Elk Grove Musical Theater Company. We are so grateful for the city's tradition of helping the groups that are accomplishing good things in Elk Grove. Your investments via the CDBGs and the Community Service Grant make our community stronger and healthier. We recognize the difficult decisions that you are facing in this process, and we want to thank you for including and supporting the arts. As MMP supporters have already established, the arts are vital to our community's health. We had a difficult few years since 2020, and your support will make a huge difference to our program. Elk Grove Musical Theater Company is an all-volunteer-run nonprofit theater company devoted to providing low-cost theater opportunities so that anyone, regardless of income or ability to pay, can participate. We provide performing, we've been performing in facilities outside the city limits recently because the one big auditorium in Elk Grove, Casunus Oaks, is highly impacted with high demand between their own school and the many other groups that would like to use it. And it's also more expensive than some of the other facilities in the area. So this community service grant will help us to reach our goal of coming back to Elk Grove, to perform here in our city. It will also help us provide more low-cost performing opportunities for Elk Grove youth, regardless of their ability to pay. It also, lastly, will help us provide scholarships for Elk Grove youth in need. Thank you so much for your efforts and the time you spent listening to all of us go on and on about the things that we care so passionately about. We're very grateful.
Thank you. Next up is Nettie Fisher, followed by Christine Nguyen.
Thank you. I'm kind of impromptu here. I want to let you know that I greatly appreciate the fact that you're considering GOALS to be one of the recipients of your grant. GOALS is an organization that services persons with disabilities from 16 to 87, I think, is our oldest bowler. These are young, and these are adults and people that, after they've out of the school system, their social activities become very minimal. What we offer them is an opportunity to participate in a community activity that the general population just kind of goes and does. Our newest member is a young man who is blind and deaf, and it's exciting to see the thrill on his face when he throws that ball or actually slides it down the ramp, and we explain where the ball is going, and when he hears the pins fall down, he wants to know where they went. Working with this organization since 2003, I've kind of much adopted most of the guys, starting with my own son. So when I watch these folks bowl, knowing that the majority of them are either in a care home or on very limited funds, our goal is to make sure that they can bowl whether there's money there or not. So we've always kept everything down at a minimal price, picking up the balance. This grant that you are considering giving us will allow us to make sure that our bowlers can continue to bowl, and when they don't have the money, we just pick up the tab, which we do anyway. But this will make it easier for us to go on and continue. We want to work for another 10 to 15 years. Thank you so much for considering GOALS as one of your recipients.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Christine Nguyen.
Good evening, Mayor and council member. My name is Christine Nguyen. I'm the CEO of My Sister's House. I just want to take a second to thank you and the staff and the review panel for putting My Sister's House on the funding recommendation for this upcoming year. With the funding, we're going to be able to serve several of the 46 ladies that are on our waiting list to be served through My Sister's House. As you know, My Sister's House is a domestic violence service provider. We have shelter services, housing program, employment counseling, and legal services. So our homes are in confidential areas, but know that we are serving the city of Elk Grove through this grant and through other funding streams at My Sister's House. So thank you so much. I'm very honored to be a part of such an amazing organization that spoke tonight in their mission. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Ms. Nguyen. And that concludes our final speaker. So I will go ahead and close the public comment opportunity and declare this public hearing is now closed and look for some comments, questions, direction from my colleagues. I'll start to...
So before we start, we have two potential grant recipients in which Councilmember Spees has an interest. So you recall the way we've done this in the past, as we ask councilmember Spees to step out. The council makes a preliminary determination on those two grant recipients, and he comes back. So if you don't mind, councilmember Spees? You have to come back.
Nobody says you have to.
So the two matters are Elk Grove Community Foundation, recommended at $15,000, and Running for Rett, recommended at $10,000.
All right, let's address those two so we can bring them back in. Are we good with current direction?
Happy to support those, yeah.
All right. This is not a motion, so we support it.
There's consensus, that's good enough. Thank you.
All right, we can bring them back in. Someone going to let them know? All right, we'll start with some conversation here about the grants. We'll start to the left here. Councilmember, soon.
Thank you, Mayor. There's a lot of great need, a lot of great missions out there. And it was great to hear from folks tonight. MMP coming out in force, that was great to hear. But really appreciate your advocacy for the arts because it is important, and it's important to all of us. I just want to thank not only all of you for that mission, and I want to thank the staff, you know, Alicia and her team. It's such a difficult process or challenging process to allocate, you know, limited funds, as you saw earlier. But also, I just wanted to quickly say a testament to all of you because if you're on this list, it doesn't, it means not only do you have a very good mission, but you've been implementing, you've been doing things in a very effective manner and also in, I would say, good stewards of your funds because that is one of the things, you know, we're looking at how you're benefiting Elk Grove residents and how you're using those monies or using them wisely. So are these very slim dollars are being put to the best use. So kudos to all of you there, and I support staff's recommendation. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you to everyone who applied. It's always hard when you're talking about funding and making sure that every nonprofit is being taken care of, especially in our city. But we thank you for your hard work and everything that you've been doing. In reviewing some of the grants, I was actually, can we ask for another nonprofit to be requested to have more funding? I guess that's the question.
So just remember that as you request to add, then we're going to have to take away. So there's that reality.
Okay, well, I would, I'll put it out here. I would like to see if we can give Hope X, uh, X-Hope, sorry. X-Hope, an additional $10,000.
So what I will offer up also is we all have discretionary funds. So those can also be there to augment some of these. So if you're making that recommendation, I mean, there is, you've got discretionary funds, and I would just say that if you're looking to add more funding there, what are you looking at decreasing?
Okay, well, that's why I like to put it out there and then kind of hear what my other colleagues have to say.
Okay, so is that it?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. So yeah, just as a reminder, if we're adding, we're also then taking away. So that's a tough call. And as a reminder, we all have discretionary funds to augment some of those more, those nonprofits that we are more passionate about, although I feel like we're passionate about everything. But there are some that we are maybe more so than others. So I will go to Councilmember Brewer.
So I want to thank everyone for coming tonight and putting their best foot forward and presenting a case on why their program should be funded and to give us a little glimpse into each of their programs. I also want to thank our group of scouts who've braved the entire evening. Because I know some of you, this is not fun work, this is not easy work. It will bore you to tears, it may make you go to sleep, but at the end of the day, you'll have a full heart at the end of the process.
They'll remember the badge, though, too.
But what I do appreciate is, because there were some programs that I saw that did not get awarded. But if you apply, just keep in the loop, keep applying. Because, and just continue building your case on why your program should receive funding because I did see a couple of programs that did not make the cut. And, but at the same time, I saw programs that made the cut this year that were very, very, very worthy of consideration. Matter of fact, the one that really got me specifically, the GOALS Bowling League. So growing up, I had five cousins who were developmentally disabled. And I just, and while I was going to elementary school, we had a, we had a school across the way where we went, and we were mentors, and we were, and we, and we befriended them, did a lot of activities with those students. And it was really enriching. If there was ever an opportunity where you could spend time with someone of that nature, it makes your life that much more enriching. It really does. And to have four cousins that I grew up with. And they were older, but in their mind, they were the same age as me. And to see and do activities with them was really, was really heartening. So I really am happy that we were able to give as much as we could for GOALS this year. And I really hope that we can come back next year and provide them with something as well. I know, I definitely intend to use some of my funds for Big Day Giving to help GOALS out. That is for sure. But a lot, but these other programs, obviously, we have our mainstays. Elk Grove Food Bank Services, Al Misba. X-Hope, definitely see the need in helping them. Chicks in Crisis, Elk Grove Heart, Uplift Elk Grove. On the front lines, helping people, enhancing and making things better for the community, helping uplift people and being that hand up when they need to is very important. And I'm very happy that we are providing that through this, through the CSG grants and for these community development block grants. With the list that I see tonight, I'm comfortable with what we have in front of us in providing what we can in terms of our block grants and community service grants.
Thank you. Councilmember Spees?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I want to thank Ms. Tutt. It is not an easy job. I get it. So I appreciate that, as well as, this is the first time, I think, I've seen you since last time I had a comment relative to your assistance with the Sacramento Metropolitan Cable Television Commission and the grant process there. So I appreciate you for that. So first, I guess, relative to giving some direction on the consolidated plan. In general, most of these things, particularly the consolidated plan, I have three Hs that I'm most concerned about, and that's hunger, housing, and health. And I recognize that those are almost intricately entwined together. But those would be ones that I would certainly prioritize within the consolidated plan. You know, without going into, you know, a long dissertation, I think we can all recognize that, you know, housing and hunger, and again, health being connected to it, are extremely difficult problems that we're, that we have throughout California and the rest of the United States. And so those will always continue to be my priorities. So, that said, when it comes to reallocating or any of these, I, you know, I've received calls from other organizations who have their own concerns as well, that they would like to have had more, that they would have appreciated more, some even have programs that they will cease to operate if they don't get. So what I'm saying is, I think that Ms. Tutt and her team have done a very, very good job in balancing the grants as drafted, and I would support the plan specifically as drafted. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to my colleagues here for your excellent and thoughtful comments. We saw what the need was. The request was $5 million and more. That's a lot. Obviously, we don't have that to allocate with a record number of 42 applications. I want to thank everyone that came out to speak, and this is hard. So I want to thank staff for your due diligence in helping us, really. And I also really appreciate the review committee. It was very diverse, and getting that input and feedback from everyone is very, very important. At the end of the day, what I see here, and I appreciate as the nonprofits that all of you are, is that the government can't be all things to everyone. And I really want to recognize and thank all our nonprofits for stepping up and helping our community in all of your respective ways. So thank you for all that you do in the city of Elk Grove. So with that, I too support staff recommendation. I wish we had more money to allocate for all of these organizations and some that we didn't allocate funding for. The need continues to be great, but I want to thank and recognize our city for stepping up and doing our role for our community. So thank you, and thank you, everyone that came this evening. All right, so I think we have sufficient direction on this item. We will move on to item 8.2. Yes?
Nope, we don't need a motion.
There's not a motion, it's just basically direction.
Council direction, consensus.
We're all consensus, that is, supporting staff recommendation. Sorry.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council, Joseph Dagemean, Associate Planner, and the Community Development Department. Item 8.2 this evening is the Grab and Go Determination of Public Convenience or Necessity. This project is, consists of a determination of a public convenience or necessity, also known as a PCN, to allow the Grab and Go Convenience Store to obtain a Type 20 alcohol beverage license from the California Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control. The Type 20 is for the sale of beer and wine for off-site consumption. The project site is located at 9630 East Stockton Boulevard, Suite Number 140, within the Plaza Shopping Center along the west side of East Stockton Boulevard, just south of the intersection with Elk Grove Boulevard. Just a little bit of project background history. Back on September 1st of 2022, the Planning Commission approved Phase 3 of the shopping center, which consisted of a fueling station, a 5,050-square-foot retail building with a drive-thru. Grab and Go is occupying approximately 1,650 square feet of that building, a 2,020-square-foot Starbucks building with a drive-thru. The Starbucks opened in late 2024. The construction on the fueling station and the Grab and Go are just about complete, and they are set to open shortly. This is the floor plan for the Grab and Go Convenience Store. The area outlined in red is the area where beer and wine products are going to be sold and displayed inside the convenience store. So ABC requires that an applicant obtain a PCN from the affected jurisdiction when the establishment is located within a high-crime area or when the census tract is deemed over-concentrated by ABC standards. A high-crime area is defined as a crime-reporting district that has a 20% greater number of reported crimes than the average number of reported crimes for all districts in the city. Elk Grove is separated into 26 sectors for crime reporting purposes. That is for data by the police department. The project site is located in Subsector 5104, which had 46 crimes reported in the year 2024. The average number of crimes per beat is 116, so this project is not in what is determined to be a high-crime area. However, it is under Census Tract 93.09. This census tract is determined to be over-concentrated as there are two licenses are considered to be over-concentrated. There's currently three active licenses in the census tract. So the city council determines whether public convenience or necessity will be served by the issuance of an alcohol license for the applicant's premise based on the following factors. There's four of them, and I'll go over them individually. So the first one is the proximity and number of other retail outlets selling alcohol. The retail outlets near the project site that's currently serving alcohol are the Elk Grove Chevron Extra Mile Convenience Store located at 9603 East Stockton Boulevard, the Loop Neighborhood Market attached to the Shell Gas Station at 8607 Elk Grove Boulevard, and the CVS Pharmacy located at 8585 Elk Grove Boulevard. The second one is the proximity to retail outlets, to schools, playgrounds, and other facilities serving young people. So the nearest facility serving young people is approximately 800 feet away. That is the Codeninjas at 8641 Elk Grove Boulevard. The nearest school is more than half a mile away, which is Joseph Kerr Middle School. And the nearest park is also nearly half a mile away, which is Baker Park. The third one is the proximity to retail outlets to residential neighborhoods. The nearest neighborhood is the Elk Creek Metal Subdivision, which is approximately 600 feet to the east. And finally, whether the retail outlet provides a wide range of desirable goods and services or a unique type of goods and service. So for this use, the property would allow for customers to fill their vehicles up with fuel at the fueling station, as well as purchase groceries at the Grab and Go Convenience Store while reducing the number of trips they might need to make elsewhere. So we believe a unique type of goods and services are being provided here. As part of the request for the PCN, the applicant must show how the alcohol license will serve the public's convenience and necessity. In response, the applicant notes that the sale of beverages would offer customers the convenience of fueling their vehicles while purchasing the limited selection of beer and wine, along with other groceries, in a one-stop-shop atmosphere. Based on the reviewed data, the location of the proposed business, and the operating guidelines that have been presented by the business, the approval of this license will likely not result in increased calls for service. The police department has determined that there is no public safety reason to oppose either a finding of the PCN or associated ABC license application. The applicant has indicated that they will implement a number of security and safety measures as part of the sale of the products. In terms of SEQA, the project is exempt from SEQA pursuant to Section 15061B3. This is the common sense exemption. Granting of the PCN will expand the services at the convenience store but will not bring any physical change to the environment. So with that, staff is recommending approval of... to the environment. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the PCN this evening. That concludes my presentation. Staff and the applicant are available to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your presentation. At this time, I will declare that the public hearing is now open. Would the applicant like to make any statements, or? Yes, no?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members. My name is Chitesh Gill. So thanks for this opportunity. You know, currently, for the last probably 18, 20 years, I do own and operate several ABC licenses up and down, you know, few cities, mostly towards south from here in Central Valley. So I'm very familiar with the responsibility and accountability that comes with selling, you know, restricted products, and sort of proud to say that over 18 years, we had one violation so far. We have a pretty robust, you know, program, training program, where we have bars program, where we get these shops that we pay for, where we have a third party that comes into our locations once a month for sure, and they sort of test our employees to make sure they are checking IDs and making sure that they're following the ABC laws. So, and everything else that goes with, you know, the ABC laws, right? So, you know, thanks for, I mean, it's a great city. I'm glad that we are here, and would love to have your support. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. At this time, I will open up the public comment opportunity. Nobody has signed up to speak to, on this item. I will close the public comment opportunity, and I will declare that the public hearing is now closed. Any questions, comments? We'll start to the left. Anything?
Nothing. I'm happy to move the recommendation.
All right. Any questions or comments? Otherwise, I'll look for a second.
Second.
All right. If a motion is second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Next item.
It's section nine, the regular agenda action items of recommendations, and we have one item, which is item 9.1, which is receive a presentation of the Elk Grove Police Department's annual report for 2024.
Let's hope it comes up. Before I start, actually, I need to acknowledge the officer that was killed in Marysville today. So our thoughts and prayers are to the Marysville Police Department, the officers' families, and all the men and women that serve the communities that we all live in. So, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, this is my opportunity to provide the annual report for the Elk Grove Police Department. My name is Bobby Davis, and I am very fortunate to be the Chief of Police for the City of Elk Grove and the Elk Grove Police Department. There are some bets going around about how long I'm going to be talking. I am going to do my best to not make it too long. I'm just kidding about the bets. There are a couple of areas that I am going to hit, and I will talk about specifically, and then a little bit about Measure E, because it's made a significant impact to our organization and public safety in our city this last year. So quickly, I just want to talk, the very first thing, I would like to read the message, and the message that I put on this annual report, and reset by definition means to start again or anew. There are moments when we're presented with the opportunity to reset, some anticipated, some unexpected. And 2024 was somewhat of a reset for the organization. While unexpected, I also was reminded of a significant, the significance of a reset. Stabilizing the foundation that has already been established and maintaining consistency has propelled us forward to welcome change in the coming year. As we've embraced the state, the start of a new year, we're diving deeper into service-led leadership. We must stand on all sides of the flag to lift it up as one, and our efforts to serve the people of Elk Grove to the best of our abilities. As an organization, we preserve public peace and enforce the laws while we dedicate ourselves to service with concern while keeping our humanity and humility intact. I am grateful to work with the women and men of the Elk Grove Police Department, who honor our profession by maintaining the highest levels of excellence and integrity in their service to our community. Together and united, we will accomplish everything. The organization itself, we have a total staff of 325 allocated positions. We have 282 out of 301 authorized currently, 165 of 169 authorized sworn, and that's a pretty significant number for law enforcement. To have that low of vacancy rate speaks a lot to what you have done for us as electeds, what our city has done in support for us, and what our staff, I believe, has done to show that the employees here have a fruitful and supportive workplace, and it keeps them here, and we're very, very fortunate of that. The other, the other way that I gauge that is by the people who do the work here for free. We have a significantly robust volunteer program at the City of Elk Grove. We have over 300 volunteers for the city, for the police department and the City of Elk Grove, and that speaks volumes, I think, to what they want to do in continuing service to us and for us in the city and the support that they choose to provide to us. Our overall budget is $73 million, $73.6 million. Our, out of the general fund is $64.7. Measure E is $5.9 million as well. Part of our mission is, you know, a strong community outreach and partnership. It's fair and impartial interactions. It's promoting public safety through prevention, intervention, and enforcement, and developing and promoting a diverse and professional workforce. And that's extremely important to us, and you'll see that theme throughout this presentation. The way that we're able to do that and meet that, that vision, mission, and values really is by gauging our work product in our community. Through a spider tech, a company that we use, and we send officers to a call for service in our community, we call back. We ask for feedback from those people that we've touched in our communities, and by doing that, we ask them a variety of things, from the moment that the first contact they made with our dispatch to how our officers responded to them. And as you can see, we have excellent numbers as a result of contacts, whether good or bad. In our community, we have a positive outcome for the majority of the things that we do. The other way that we're able to maintain our success in our community is through wellness. Our city provides us a wonderful opportunity through health and wellness to include a counselor for the organization itself, who specifically deals with trauma for officers and culturally competent therapy for the officers here in our organization. And I'll just read a quick quote. "The Elk Grove Police Department therapist Veronica Kennedy has played a pivotal role in promoting the wellness of our employees throughout the year. Along with providing therapy services to staff, Veronica conducted trauma-informed training for employees, equipped them with the skills to understand, recognize, and respond to the effects of trauma." And it's pretty significant when you consider, if we are healthy internally, we're going to be that much better, exponentially better externally, and it's extremely important to me and having the services that we provide our community. The next area I'd like to talk about is Measure E. So on November 8, 2022, the Elk Grove voters approved Measure E with a near 55% vote. This measure enacted a one-cent sales tax, local sales tax, to fund and identified, identified as important things from our community, including reducing crime, addressing homelessness, improving emergency services, enhancing youth crime and gang prevention programs, maintaining our streets, parks, and parks, improving traffic, and ensuring clean and safe public areas, and supporting economic development. And while I won't go through the Measure E specific positions, you're going to see that woven in throughout all of our services provided in this report. Our professional standards bureau really is the meat and potatoes of hiring for this organization. Through our professional standards, we're able to hire folks with the support staff from our city and human resources. Professional standards is uniquely positioned with a diverse scope of responsibilities that support the organizations holistically. In 2024, PSB experienced a significant growth, adding several new positions funded by Measure E. This expansion contributed to the reduced sworn vacancy rate, allowing us to fully staff both existing roles and new initiatives. PSB also strengthened its training capacity by appointing its first full-time training and development coordinator, dedicated to providing ongoing training and professional development for all members of this organization. From recruitment and hiring, in-house and post-regulated training, policy, risk management, internal affairs, investigations, and the use of force activity, along with collaborating with the city attorney's office to minimize liability, PSB plays a vital multifaceted role in advancing the organization's mission and goals. PSB holds us accountable for all of our actions in our community, and that's a very important piece, along with hiring. So one of the areas that we focus at is the diversity in this organization and hiring and our demographics, and what does our department look like? Can we or do we match the people that we serve in our community? And I believe that we do. In 2024, we had the pleasure of welcoming 64, 65 new employees, 32 sworn staff and 33 professional staff to this organization. In the new hires, female, we hired 48% and 52% male. Of those new hires, you can see the demographics, black Americans, we had 2%, we had 39% Hispanic, 15% Asian, and 44% white. Total personnel for the city, for the Elk Grove Police Department, we have 45% and then the 55% male, 45% female, 55% male. And they look at demographics for the total personnel, and black Americans, we have 8%, Hispanic, 22%, Asian, 14%, and white, 54%. We have a very diverse organization. The other way that we kind of measure the success in this organization is through internal affairs complaints. This last year, we had three internal affairs complaints, and you can see from 2020 all the way through 2024, where we've been very consistent in dropping those numbers and maintaining a level that I think through healthy relationships, healthy partnerships, professionally, we have been able to show that we have been better externally. Our numbers remain low because we take care and concern for all of the complaints that we get, but moreover, we take care and concern for the people that are serving the folks in our community, and by doing so, we're able to keep those numbers low. In addition to that, when we do get complaints, we address it immediately and we address it effectively, and that's an important piece of overall community and public safety. You can scroll through and see the other data that's associated with what professional standards keeps, which a lot of it has use of force, and then overall comparisons to 2023 and 2024, when you can see some of our, a lot of our force actually dropped in those years, and our K-9 with a fully-staffed unit has gone up. That's because deployments and the use of that as a tool has gone up as well. Media and community relations. Media and community relations is kind of an area where we not just focus on how we present socially through social media and what we represent when we do press conferences or when we respond to media requests, but it's also part of our youth services program, and again, funded by Measure E. It's one of those areas that has the, one of the greatest impacts in our community because we have a group of women and men who are out trying to not just push what we do as an organization and what we do as a city, but what they also are doing is building relationships through interactions, and through interactions that are positive and have very, very little enforcement behind them. So the real goal with our media and community relations is through our youth services program. So our youth services unit was created last year as a result of Measure E and some other funding that we've been able to utilize, and we have two officers now who spend the majority of their time at all of the Elk Grove Unified School District schools within our city, and they spend time at those schools building relationships without enforcement. The idea is to foster healthy relationships for the kids in these schools so that they can come and talk to our officers, meet them on a different playing field that has, again, little enforcement as far as contacts go with the folks in our community. The other thing that we do in media and community relations is several programs. They have, they have done over 100 programs this last year, associated to everything in our community, whether it's through the kicking it in Elk Grove, through RISE, through the Explorer Program, our Youth 911, safety and awareness presentations, our community and PD event participations, Coffee with the Cop, Fries with the Good Guys, things that we do in our community that our community comes to love out and, comes out and loves to share time with us. We had a, one of our vehicles that we have is a Jeep Gladiator. We were able to outfit this vehicle, and as you can see, like, the kids love it. We have videos now with kids playing basketball off of a hoop that we were mounted to the back of that Gladiator, and they love it. They come out, I had, I've had principals and folks talk to me about how much they appreciate our officers coming out, playing basketball, sitting down with these kids, building circle groups, helping them learn how to become leaders in our community. And this is, again, a wonderful program. One of the other things, and as you know, one of my favorites, is the barbecue in the beat. Every single year, Bart, we have, since I have had the opportunity to be the chief for our city, we have done this barbecue in the beat. Not only is it one of the main stays of our summer activities, but it's one of the best ways we've been able to connect with the folks in our community, going out and feeding the people as they come to us in each beat of our city. And one of the other things that we've been able to do as a result of that is during the week leading up to each one of those events, we take our city partners, our public works, our code enforcement, and we hit the streets and we address the quality of life issues in every single street in our city, literally every single street. So by the time we start this program to the time that we end, we have been on every single street in the City of Elk Grove, and we're proud of that. We're proud of the fact that we're able to do that and provide a service and address that. The week after the barbecue in the beat, when our, when our community comes out, we go back through and ensure that we've tried to address or touch all of those things, and then provide them feedback as to what we're going to do moving forward if there are ongoing problems. We're very proud of that, and this has brought us closer to our communities, and it's such a simple thing to sit and eat and break bread and share the things that matter to all of us in our community. Oops, I skipped real time. Next thing I'd like to talk about is our Real-Time Information Center. As you know, the Real-Time Information Center is extremely important to our everyday service, but it's more than policing. The reason we call it the Real-Time Information Center is because it's the information hub to the entire organization. It's an information hub to you as our electeds. It's an information hub to our city, our city staff, and our community. Now, we put things out that are associated with real time as it happens in our city, whether it's crime, or it's floods, or it's something that is happening catastrophic in our community or in the positive. We use this as a way to share what's happening with the police department internally and externally in our city, and it's extremely important piece of the technology that we use as we respond to calls for service within our community. In addition to that, as we move forward in this presentation, you'll see the Drone as a First Responder Program, which actually operates out of the, out of the Real-Time Information Center. The other thing that Real-Time has done is this annual report. Kristin and Andrea and Gabrielle have done wonderful work, providing me the information that I can share with you today, and I'd be remiss if I did not mention them. Operations. So this is the forefront, really the most forward-facing thing that the people see in our community when we're talking about the Elk Grove Police Department in our cars. They are the folks that are on the streets, basically doing all of the calls for service, but also just being a visible presence for the people in our community, being present, showing that we're there, making stops on people who are maybe speeding or not, but just providing a service to our community, whether it's a call for service or through proactive policing. The Operation Division continues to be the home of our two most public-facing units within the organization, and that is Field Services and Traffic. The Field Services Bureau is better known as PATROL, where all of our new police officers start their law enforcement careers and work side by side with tenured officers. Although there's been a great deal of movement, our PATROL units have continued to keep our ranks filled to ensure that community, that our community is provided with services they deserve and expected when they call us for help. And just a quick glance at some numbers, PATROL operations this year, through PATROL and other services, we've had 2,100 arrests. We had 8,300 reports taken, and they've responded to 91,000 calls for service. Very similar to the prior year, but very consistent in the overall service. In addition to that, calls for service specifically, we had a 1% increase, which is not a huge number, but it's 91,094 calls relating to PATROL itself. And then agency arrests, we've had 2,100 arrests this year, as opposed to the 2,600 we had last year, which is a 22% decrease. Even though the calls were very similar, we had a different result in a lot of those calls, and not every call that we go to is going to result in arrests, and I actually think that those are positive numbers, meaning that we've had contacts that don't always end up in arrests for the folks that we make contact with in our community. And later on, you'll see we had a rise in our Crisis Intervention Response Team. When they respond to many, many calls, those are calls where there is crisis and arrests aren't necessary, and we'll talk about that as we get closer to that. Reports that were taken, roughly the same, it's pretty flat, 8,300 reports, 1% decrease. And then into traffic. Traffic is obviously important for us in our city. You know, one of the, one of the, you know, greatest volume of calls that I get are associated with traffic, and so this year, specific to our traffic unit, our DUI checkpoints, we did 10, 10.5% of all traffic-related activity was DUI checkpoints. Motorcycle safety operations was 17.5. Our bicycle, pedestrian, and motorcycle enforcement was 17.5. Our bicycle, pedestrian and motorcycle enforcement was seventeen point five. Where's my, I need to get some glasses. Distracted driving is seventeen point five and the traffic enforcement in general was thirty six point eight. So as you can see, our traffic unit is busy. Last year, we lost a few traffic officers through retirement and movement, and we're actually staffing, getting those back staffed to full staff now. Our collisions by the numbers, so we had eleven hundred and twenty two collisions in our city this year or last year, and seventy three of those were as a result of DUI. You can see our DUI arrests were twelve percent down, thirty, thirty one less than the year before. And then, and as you can compare to two thousand and twelve, I'm sorry, to two thousand and twenty two, they went up in two thousand and twenty three and then a little bit down or flattened out a little bit this year. We like to believe that a lot of that has to do, because our operations were standard this year for, as they have been. We believe that our folks are, are starting to understand the importance of not driving if you have been drinking in our community. As far as distracted driving, you can see this has gone up, eleven percent increase. And I will tell you that distracted driving is just as, as dangerous as any driving in our communities. And, and so for us to go buy vehicles, see them on their phones or doing other things in their cars, they will be cited in our city if we see that. Special operations. So here, I'm not going to cover all of what our SWAT team does and what our K nine units do or even our UAS, but I, I do want to cover for a few minutes what our, our DFR is, a Drone as a First Responder Program has brought to our city. Everybody loves our K nines and, and that, and, and that's great, so I'm going to skip past them because I can't really. What I do want to talk about is DFR. So Drone as a First Responder, for those who don't know, our DFR program, our Drone as a First Responder Program is now operational and is utilized, it is utilized to provide real time updates from an aerial vantage point. With Drone being remotely piloted from the Real Time Information Center, the program enhances our response to active calls for service, including incidents such as assaults, reckless driving, suspicious persons, missing persons, traffic collisions, suspicious circumstances, felony vehicles or pod hits, thefts, robberies, fire life calls and burglaries. And in particular, this incident was one of the crimes that was part of our organized retail theft. And we ended up catching them because DFR went to the first location that they showed up at. We had reports that they left in a vehicle, DFR found it, it had gone into one of our other local businesses, and we caught them as we staged on the way out. They took off running, obviously you see what happened, we ended up getting caught. The other thing that we're able to do is address, and it's a perfect beginning to this, is we address the fireworks situation with DFR. As you know, all of you probably received the calls that we get regarding the fireworks in our community. DFR has also allowed us to launch, fly over those areas, identify specific individuals who were utilizing illegal fireworks and allows us an opportunity to go back to those locations without putting anybody at risk and issuing citations with our code enforcement partners and our fire, our CSD fire partners as well. So just quickly, in the, in the short time that we had DFR, they did nine hundred and twenty four calls. DFR assisted in ninety one arrests. DFR also dropped our response time to two point two minutes. That's a huge number considering that our traditional response time for just general calls is seven point seven minutes. And you can see that that number, and this isn't a specific hot call, this is a general number. But if we have hot calls, and I'll give you an example, we had a, a fire life call, we had a fire at a house on the way on the east side, our DFR launched from our city hall. It was at the call itself in thirty seven seconds. With that information, we're able to feed that to our CSD partners and they can make the determination on what apparatus or services to send without sending the whole house and potentially wasting or not having the right resources there. They're able to see what it is and deploy based on the information we can share with DFR. It is a tool that has been absolute game changer for us. And again, it is, it is Measure E. We can't be, we can't really say that the impact that Measure, Measure E has had for us and our community and for the police department. Investigations Division. Our Investigations Division is the voice for those who no longer have a voice. And for me, this, this is an extremely important piece of what we do and how we find closure for the people in our community who've been victims of crimes. We're very proud of the work that they do this year in our Investigation Division. And I'll cover just a few things with some of the numbers and we'll get into numbers later as well. But we have a twelve percent increase in trespass. Why that's significant is exactly what our city sponsored, our mayor sponsored in Prop thirty six. And the change in Prop thirty six has given our community or the businesses in our community a reason to report and tell us that we don't want people who aren't supposed to be in our business, in our business. Trespassing goes up, we're able to issue, say, or issue notices for them not to be there and it gives us another handle or opportunity to provide a service to the community if that person comes back. And we're seeing a rise in trespass notices and trespasses in our city. We strongly believe as a result of Prop thirty six. So we're thankful, Mayor, and to our state for allowing us to, again, have the authority to enforce the laws in our community. In Investigations, cases assigned to Investigations is six hundred and twenty five. Cases closed by Investigations are four hundred and twenty eight. Missing person cases assigned is one hundred and one and ninety six that are still, or that were closed. One of the areas that we really focus on are domestic, are really his domestic violence in our community, and we'll talk a little bit about that when we look at some of the numbers that were reported to the, the reporting index, and, and we'll talk about why those numbers have gone up. But support, wraparound services and providing a, a closure for many of our victims include domestic violence, which is really an unpredictable crime that we have in our city and is really hard, really hard to prevent. One of the best awards that you can receive as an investigator and probably the highest award that you can receive in Sacramento County is for the care of the children in our community. Internet Crimes Against Children Detective Monroe received an award from the Sacramento County District Attorney's Office, essentially indicating that she was the best investigator when it came to protecting our kids this last year. And she's one of ours, and we're extremely proud of her, proud of that service. We've been part of this program for, gosh, many, many, when I was at the Sheriff's Department, I, I knew her from when I was the commander in that organization and she was doing the work then. She has been consistent in her efforts to make sure that every child who's been victimized has a voice in our community, and that is through her, through the court system, providing justice and ensuring that those people that victimize our childrens go to jail. Forensics is also part of our investigative division. We know we don't have any of our cases cleared if we don't have the right evidence as been gathered, and that's what our forensics team does. Community Resources, another extremely important piece of, of our organization and probably is getting close to the, to as forward facing as Patrol. Our Community Resources Bureau is specific to our problem-oriented policing, our homeless outreach team, our crisis intervention team, school resource officers, and then our volunteers and police services. In collaboration with the Sacramento County DA, District Attorney's Office, the Bureau is excited to introduce a new community prosecutor as well. This past year, Anthony Ortiz from the District Attorney's Office had a full year with us and has helped us in several prosecutions and, and specifically to address the quality of life crimes we've had in our community. As a whole, this whole team truly does quality of life policing. Our POP team is exactly what it is, is problem-oriented policing. They work with our code partners and our public works team to address things that happen specifically in neighborhoods, whether it's, you know, cars parked where they're not supposed to be or, you know, unkempt yards or different things that are going on in communities, neighborhood disputes. They're there to go and try to find a balance in between the two and, and try to address those concerns that are happening. Homeless Outreach. Homeless Outreach is part of our team that goes out and cleans up areas where we have some folks who are unhoused. What we've seen as a result of the shelter in our community is less camp cleanups, which is a, I think, part of the overall mission of our organization, meaning our entire municipality. And as a result, we're seeing areas that we don't have as many of these type of cleanups that are necessary, but we still have them every now and again. And you can see the difference between when we get before and after. It's pretty amazing to see how clean those areas are and that when we go back, there are less, it's less likely to find people in these spaces because we have partnered with, with our community. Our city has allowed us to have a shelter and it has made a significant difference for us in, in what we do. As you can see, we took fifty six thousand pounds of trash that were removed from a lot of these sites. So obviously it makes a, a visual difference as well, not just an enforcement handle. And then our crisis response team, so I'll kind of get back to some of the crime stats and some of the crimes that you, you've seen. So in two thousand and twenty four, our CRT team, and that is where we have a counselor assigned with a police officer to address mental health issues or families that are in crisis in our community. As you know, this is a hot topic for us and for the Elk Grove Police Department, our response has never changed. Our response will not change. We will respond to families that are in crisis and allow our mental health clinician and the officer to determine if it is a, a family that is in true mental health crisis or criminal crisis. And for us, the difference is extremely important to address. And so as you can see, the calls for service this year were six hundred and eighty six and the mental health interventions were provided at five hundred and forty eight of those. That would have been five hundred and forty eight arrests, arrests two years ago. That is significantly different approach for us and has made a huge impact to all of those in our community who have had, who needed crisis intervention from mental, the mental health aspect and not the criminal aspect. So you can see the numbers from two thousand and twenty three to two thousand and twenty four, we went from three hundred and eighty seven to five hundred and forty eight, and it was a forty two percent increase. That's a really big number for us and how we respond to people in our community who are in true crisis and not criminal crisis. So for us, this is an extremely important program. We're adding another clinician now, we have three that we're finalizing interviews with. So we will have two in our community to help handle these calls. And I would expect these numbers to rise because we're going to be able to respond to even more and hopefully help and get services for these communities or people that are in, in crisis. Just an anonymous call or based on the Spider Report, the counselor and officer of the crisis response team thoroughly answered our questions and gave us steps to take, to take that were practical and helpful and searching for a way to resolve our issue. That's what we want to see. We really want to see that. Not everybody needs to go to a correctional facility to have their problems addressed. Part of that too is our crisis negotiations team, they have grown as well, but in our school resource officers. So this is really the last piece of, of the community resources, and that is our SROs. We have had a growing presence in the Elk Grove Unified School District with our SROs. We have excellent feedback from our schools, our principals, our teachers, who truly appreciate the relationships they have built with our school resource officers. We have a very good program, they are present in our schools, they are responsive to the kids and they provide people to go to that they can trust and they can build relationships with in the law enforcement community that will only create relationships that'll be lasting, and that is extremely important to us. As you can see, there's a short picture there of some of our, our Sacramento County partners and our partners as well. Oops, where was I? Oh, Animal Services. So Animal Services for us is, is a, you know, has become this a very important piece of who we are and, and I think it's part of our identity as a city. The animal shelter continues to thrive as a temporary home for thousands of animals in the Elk Grove community. Thanks to the dedication, hard work for Animal Services staff and through grant funding, we have expanded our T and R program, which we know has been a topic for us in the last year. And we're excited that this work has continued in two thousand and twenty five. This year, we also welcomed a new veterinarian. We conducted monthly high volume T and R services and we hosted four free vaccine clinics. Also in collaboration with County Supervisor, Supervisor Hume, we offered some free spay and neuter surgeries for Elk Grove pets, and we partnered with PetSmart, who we continue to partner with, and in-store adoptions and participating over community and twenty community sites, locations where we can share and, and offer adoption services to our community. As you can see, Animal Services licenses issued, we're ninety three hundred this year, animals adopted eighteen hundred, animals fostered eighteen hundred, animals vaccinated at thirty four hundred, and then microchips administered. We have a very busy Animal Services or Animal Shelter, and we're really proud of the work that they do for that. And as you can see, the number that increased, we had a fifty one percent increase in trap neuter and return or release to our community this year. And that's as a result of, of a lot of the work that's gone on there, getting our new veterinarian and just honestly, the love and care that our Animal Services folks have for, for the services that they provide. Support Services, Dispatch. This last year, we had our dispatch center was completely revamped. It has now become an extremely open and wide space. Part of that was through the help of Measure E, we were able to add positions. And now our patrol staff services, or I'm sorry, our dispatch center has gone from a twelve hour shift model to match our patrol model, which is a ten hour shift model. In the past, they were sitting in front of the monitor for about twelve hours a day, in some cases more than that. But now they're having an opportunity to sit between seven and seven and a half to eight hours in front of a monitor and they have overlap and they can take breaks and they can get away from the, the screen itself. And we have greater staffing, which is going to allow for healthier workspace and opportunity for them to promote as well. So we have kind of created an ecosystem, ecosystem inside there of not just new hires and growth, but promotion and opportunity in upward movement, which is extremely important to providing a workspace which is condensed into a happy and healthy place where people can grow in their professional lives. We're very proud of them and you'll see the work that they do right here. One hundred and sixty, sixty, one hundred and sixty thousand, four hundred and forty seven calls per service. Fifty four, fifty four thousand, two hundred and seventy two of those were nine one ones, so emergency calls, and they were all answered in fifteen seconds or less. And I don't know about you, but that is a huge number of calls to answer that fast. But if you think about that, that is almost, that's fifty four thousand calls that people were in crisis or in emergency in our city and we were able to get to them relatively quickly. And that's extremely important to us. But to do that, we had to have a healthy center, and that's what we have. Total calls or service, we're down a smidge this last year. And so one hundred, one hundred and sixty nine thousand from two thousand and twenty three to one hundred and sixty thousand this year. It's a relatively flat number, but it is down this year. And then let's get into some crime stats. So in two thousand and twenty four, and I think this is an important piece to read and I'm almost done. So this is an important piece though. In two thousand and twenty four, the Elk Grove Police Department provided crime statistics to the National Incident Based Reporting System. That's NIBRIS. Administered by the FBI, this system is tailored to collect and report crime data, ensuring that a uniformed language for crime classification across the country. NIBRIS plays a crucial role in adding law enforcement agencies, in aiding law enforcement agencies in their criminal investigations. Through the lens of crime-related elements, NIBRIS examines various aspects concerning victims, their relationships, arrestees and the property involved. The system organizes crime reporting into three primary categories, crimes against persons, crimes against property and crimes against society. This is different than the way we reported in the past. This actually breaks them down and gives you true victimization and through ways to report the crime as it's occurred. Elk Grove experienced a rise in crime against persons encompassing offenses like domestic violence and internal assaults. Unfortunately, domestic violence incidents are unpredictable due to their complexity and various factors involved. Recognizing this challenge, the department remains committed to ensuring the processes and initiatives that support victims, prevention occurrences and hold the offenders accountable. Crimes against property saw a decline largely attributed to the drop in theft of motor vehicle parts such as catalytic converters, as well as a reduction in burglaries. Further reductions are evident and are evident in crimes against society, particularly in areas such as drug offenses, driving under the influence, weapons violations. This improvement can be attributed to the advanced technology provided by the department and our city, ultimately which supports our patrol investigators and support staff. And as you can see, property crimes, eight hundred and seventy two, five hundred and sixty six crimes against society, property crimes, not person crimes, I'm sorry, was the first one, property crimes at thirty four hundred and twenty five. And it breaks us down into the very basic to what we typically would look at, and that's under person crimes. You have homicide, robbery and assault, crimes against society or drug violations, weapon violations, disorderly conduct, property crime, burglary, vehicle and larceny. The person crimes, as you can see, are not that public facing where in our city, we have technology that really reduces people coming in and doing quality of life crimes that affect roadways and homes and anything that there is an opportunity for us to use technology to catch somebody, you've seen those go down. Those ones that are truly unpredictable, such as homicide, robberies and assaults that typically take place behind closed doors are those ones that have gone up and, and specifically the assault is associated with domestic violence in our community. And that's an area that we're continuing to work on, continuing to provide wraparound services on to ensure those victims that there is, that their voice is heard. And if we can do anything that we can do in our communities to help them, we will do that. As you can see, the property crimes have come down three percent. Crimes against society went down thirty five percent. And then the two seventy three five or the assaults is an eighteen percent increase in reporting this last year. And then in the end, this is the end. This, we just wanted to show the folks who've served our community, our city and the police department. department here through retirement, and some of the pictures of those that have left. And then in addition, Assistant Chief Paul Solomon will be leaving us this year as well. And so we will be making, you know, moves this coming year, but Paul won't be on this one, but I felt it important to talk about that while he is here. And he is here now, and I doubt he's going to come back next year for me to do this. So I did want to mention that, that Paul will be retiring this year, and that I, other than having one of my best friends I get to work with, we will miss him and miss the services he provides. And he makes comments in here. If you go back to some of the areas that we went through and ask comments about things that are important to him and the city and what he's been able to provide for our community, I just want to say thank you, Paul, for everything you've done. And that is it. If you have any questions for me, I'm here to answer those questions, and I hope that that wasn't too bad.
It was outstanding. All right, at this time, I'll open up public comment. No one has signed up to speak. I will close the public comment and open it up to our discussions here. I don't know where I started last time, but I'll just go with Councilmember Sun.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Chief, thanks for this very informative presentation. Just a testament to all, you know, you have done, that you've picked up the baton, you know, where others have left off, and you're really turning our police department into a force of the 21st century, from technology to expanding our responses for crisis intervention, not just, you know, law enforcement type of response. Reduction in the response times, that's incredible. So just kudos to you for all that work, you and your, all your team. I also want to recognize Paul Solomon for all his work. We've been here, I mean, when I came on, you were here, and I've seen you raising the rise in the ranks, and I'm really going to miss you as well. It's great working with you, Paul. And I know we'll see you around town as a community resident, so I look forward to that as well. But again, thank you for the presentation. Oh, I was just going to say, now we know why you're such a big part of our general fund expenditures. There's so much, right? It's so broad what your department does. So again, thank you.
Yes, thank you, sir.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief, I mean, I don't think thank you is enough for what you've been doing for the organization, for what you're doing for every officer. I hear from several different folks that you're just amazing and that they don't want you to retire whenever that will come. They don't, because that's so much of an impact you're making. And Assistant Chief Solomon, you know, thank you for your years of service. Thank you for everything you've done for our community and continue to do and will do even afterwards. We really, truly appreciate you. This presentation was a testament of just how good we are for public safety and how good our community is, and I've seen your work and I continue to see it, and I'm amazed just by, as Councilmember Sun said, how we're leading in the 21st century. Several police chiefs, even sheriffs, come and ask you and seek your advice for how you're able to do what you're doing, especially with our real-time information center and even our drone program. You know, you're truly a testament of that in our region, and I know it from the Sacramento Chamber when they're talking about public safety. Everything they're trying to push and accomplish in the region, Elk Grove is already doing it, and that's big. That's big, and that's one, you know, we believe in in our force, and it's also a true testament to your leadership, also for the youth programs. I've seen the impact that it's having, and we all continue to see it in everyone's district and everyone, you know, in one Elk Grove, so look at Councilmember Sun, because it'll look at me and correct me on that one. But thank you, just truly, truly thank you. It says a lot, even with the SROs, what they're doing in our children's and in our teens and in our high school. That's right there where you start breaking barriers and you start building relationships, and law enforcement and our youth can then build that relationship. So just thank you, and I'll end my comments there.
Well, thank you so much. I will tell you that it is very little to do with me. It has to do with the women and men in this organization. Our success has very little to do with my position. It truly is the work that they put in and ensuring that they have a safe place internally so they can be that much better externally. That's really what it is. So thank you.
Just want to add just a little bit. I love that you say that because we call it soldier care, but obviously for law enforcement, it's a lot different, and you truly prioritize mental health as one of the forefronts. And when people shy away from it, you don't. You lean into it, and because of that, I truly believe that our officers are well-off. So thank you, and you said it, you said it best.
Thank you.
Councilmember Brewer?
Chief Davis, thank you for this great report. Servant leadership is something that is infectious. It breeds a culture of positivity that permeates not only throughout the institution of the Elk Grove Police Department, but it also extends to the community, and it shows the degree of trust that Elk Grove Police Department is building with the community and in law enforcement circles, definitely shows that you are a trusted resource, a valued ally in the effort to keep our community safe. And a lot of that does not happen without your leadership and without Assistant Chief Solomon's leadership as well, because not only do you work together as a team, it shows across the board, and everyone works together for the common good of protecting Elk Grove, keeping Elk Grove residents safe, and really leaving with care and consideration. And the numbers very much show that in every area, whether we're working with the schools, doing the Animal Services Division, and I know a couple of cat advocates that greatly appreciate your leadership in this space.
It's all Sarah.
And they definitely appreciate the work that you and Sarah Humley do as well, because it's a partnership, and it's something that is very, that is not only shows, not only in the work we do with the wellness, but also cutting-edge work with the DFR, the drones as first responders. That is, has been a game changer. And I was going through my notes that I do, because the one thing that really shows and really shines is the Crisis Intervention Response Team. Just knowing that there are people in distress, people that need help, and being able to de-escalate the situation really shows how Elk Grove Police Department, under your leadership, is leading the way in crisis intervention in the space where people need it the most. Because when someone's having an episode, their loved ones don't know what to do, they don't know who to call, and they call 911. So when an officer does show up, not being equipped to handle it, but to have someone who is with them really makes a world of difference. So I want to thank you so much for everything that you do and everything that the Elk Grove Police Department is doing for the city of Elk Grove. It's definitely not going unnoticed. Want to just keep up, just keep up the great work, keep up the stellar work. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Councilmember Spees?
Well, Chief, I got to say that I'm greatly disappointed.
Okay.
That your presentation was so short. Because I could have done that all night. Honestly, I mean, I really, this is probably one of those reports that I could geek out on all night and have conversations about, because there's just a lot of fantastic news in there. And so first and foremost, I want to say thank you to our police department. All of the men and women who are on our police force are held in very high esteem by myself and my colleagues and by the community. You can see that evidenced by their interactions on social media and in the streets, and when we're, you know, when we're walking around, having conversations with people, you know, a lot of people, their words are, "I love Elk Grove PD, I love them." Okay, great, I'm glad to hear that, you know? So I'll just, I'll pick on a couple of things here or, you know, highlight a few things. Having a little bit of law enforcement in background myself, what I, one of the things that I was happy to see is even further reduction in the IA complaints, right? Internal affairs, those are, you know, when folks have a beef, they've got a big complaint with the police, that it comes in as an IA complaint. You know, one of them external, right? So one from the community, right? That's incredible. And then two from internal, that's PD taking care of themselves, right? And that shows integrity, so I'm very thrilled about that. Of course, you know, we'll be happy to see it get to zero, but we're trending and we're, I mean, come on, that's awesome. The second one, it's, you know, it's enabled by Measure E and, you know, the statistic of the 2.2-minute average response time to get on scene from five minutes, I think you said, was a seven.
Seven point, seven point two, yeah.
Yeah, so it's a five-minute decrease. Folks, that is incredible, right? That, it reduces the time that our PD can be on scene assessing what's going on. But even further, I think you brought it up a little bit, but I think you skipped, you didn't really read it out, that 24% of calls were cleared by the DFR prior to patrol arrival. And that's extremely important, because what that does is it allows the on-duty police officers to go to another scene. They can reallocate, they can go to a different place. And that is what in the military we call a force multiplier, right? That is, that is absolutely fantastic. So, you know, Measure E as well, you know, with the purchase of the DFR and the integration into our real-time information center, that's golden. So one of the things that's disappointing to me, truly disappointing to me, is to see the increase in, you know, the crimes against persons attributed mostly to an increase in domestic violence and assaults, other assaults. I would love to see if there's a way that we can, that we can reduce that. I know it's not on PD, but I'm talking about, you know, community-wide. I don't know if there's any, I don't know if there's any programs out there that successfully do that, right? Unfortunately, DV is one of those things that we deal with after the fact. But it's really kind of sad to see that most violence in Elk Grove starts at home.
Yeah, it is. I think one of the things that we do and can do is continue to wrap our services around the victims as well, to try to eliminate them from being in an environment like that. And a lot of times, these are repeat calls where we go back and they unfortunately have become victims again, and we try our best with our advocates in our community, the advocates that we have here working for our city through contracts and others with Weave and other community groups, it's getting the victims into the home. Some of the groups that were funded today are exactly what we want to see, because it gives us an alternative to take some of the victims away from that environment where they are suffering. So those numbers will hopefully reduce. You know, they fluctuate every year, and every year, we do ask ourselves why and how, and is there a way to get inside the space of that, where that's happening to try to prevent it? And, you know, I would say that we have to continue to be vigilant, we have to obviously respond, but the true impact will be getting people out of that environment where they're being victimized, and that's really what we try to do once we get that call. And I don't have an answer to stop it all, but I can tell you that when it does happen, we're going to be, do the best that we can do to ensure that those victims don't continue to be victims, and we're going to make sure there'll be wraparound services that we have in our community to help them get out of that space. That's what we can do, and that's what we will continue to do on top of responding the way that we do.
Awesome. I also like to see in terms of the reduction in, and I'll say it the wrong way, you go ahead and correct me, but in, when you have to intervene, right? When you have to physically intervene to see that, to see that that's down, right? So what, I guess what I'm saying is while we see an increase there, we are seeing a more humane approach, a more reasoned approach, and that's, I'm sure partly through the crisis response team, but that's, that's great to see. So while it went up, and there's little that we can truly do about to prevent, that's, I'm happy to see that we're reacting to it in an even better way. I didn't write down my third, my third item, so, oh, I remember what it was, because I will go on all night, folks. I'll just let you know. I'll let you know that I could probably double his presentation time, but I told you, I'm disappointed, I'm disappointed this was so short. But what, one of the things that is interesting to me, as we talked about it before, is there's a nexus, there is a connection between stolen vehicles and other crimes that happen. It's not a surprise to anybody that typically law-abiding citizens are not rolling around in stolen vehicles. Just saying. And typically, the stolen vehicles typically have some other sort of a crime associated with it, whether it's breaking into mailboxes, or maybe weapons that they shouldn't have, or drugs, right? And so I don't think you mentioned in it here, but the license plate readers, right? The license plate readers help out significantly in that, and again, that's through, you know, coordination with the real-time information center. So anyway, regardless of what I promised, I won't go on forever, but I want to say thank you once again to you, thank you to Chief Solomon, thank you very much to our, to the sworn and the non-sworn folks, you know, the folks in forensics and the folks in, you know, in property and, you know, it's, oh, and the canines who you, the canines.
Everybody loves the canines.
Everybody wants to see the canines. So anyway, I'll wrap there. Thank you very much. I appreciate the report.
I appreciate that very much, and I just want to hit on something that you talked about, and that's the DFR and that clearing of 24% of the calls. What we really appreciate is officers not having to go and make contact with maybe a member of a disparate community that didn't need contact, and having the DFR as a tool allows us to not make contact with people who don't need it. And that can have a significant impact on a community member. For some reason, if the call was to go sideways, right, and it didn't need to. And so for us, DFR is used as a tool to not just clear calls, but ensure that we're going to calls that we need to, and that's an important piece, I think, as we move into the future in law enforcement.
Thank you. Well, excellent comments. I'm not sure what's left for me to talk about, but I will share some of the things that were important to me that stuck out. But first and foremost, as you can see from my colleagues and myself, we love our Elk Grove Police Department, and we hope that you all feel supported by sort of, you know, our actions here on the dais, that we are not like many city councils. We fully support our police department, and you go above and beyond, not only you as a leader, but our entire police department in building those relationships. For me, those are key. It's those relationships that you build with our community, and I've seen that with you directly. You know, as we were engaged in conversations with a community person who have their own biases against the police department, and watching you navigate through that with not only just the utmost respect and decorum, but dignity, and you really showed me in those sort of tense moments who you are as a leader. And I know in just even that little snapshot that that's who you are within the department. I recognize our entire police department, all of the great work that all of you are doing, and really creating one of the most safest communities in the state of California, perhaps in the country. It doesn't happen by accident. It's investing, it's believing, it's supporting, supporting through mental health services. It's recognizing those needs and making sure that you're fully funded and fully supported in being able to provide those kinds of resources. The drones as first responders, I know that our neighboring cities are very interested in this. We just, I just connected you with a city council member in the city of Sacramento who is interested in this technology. Seeing the 24% of calls that were cleared, that is tremendous. And to Councilmember Spees's comments, that allows our officers to go to other calls where there might be, you know, the need is different and more urgent. So the fact that we can do this with just that, with the drones, that is quite remarkable. I appreciate that you, you know, you talked about Proposition 36. Obviously, that was very near and dear to me. I worked very hard on that statewide, and seeing the impact at the local level, that's what it's all about. It's always been about, we know our cities best. Lawmakers are stuck there in the dome and have their ideas of what's important to communities, but they fail to talk to those that are on the front lines of what it actually looks like. So it was great to take on the leadership at the state capitol, because we knew what the community wanted, what the community's needs were first and foremost, and we saw that with the passage. But I'm really happy to see how it's being implemented and seeing the impact. I know that the retailers are happy to see that, and so, and, you know, that's an important topic. If there's, other cities are looking at, they're doing presentations specific to Prop 36 implementation, and they look different in each city. So I would be curious maybe down the road of having something very specific to what Prop is. Proposition 36 looks like at the local level, how it's having an impact, where those gaps might be, so that we can be better advocates, perhaps for, we know that we need more funding to really fully realize Proposition 36. But that partnership, obviously, we have a great district attorney who also led on this as well. So somewhere down the road, would love to see what that looks like beyond the slide of just, you know, what the impact is here at the local level.
We can do that.
The school resource officers, that's near and dear to me, as a former school board member, I'm seeing the impact up close and personal. And, you know, the school district has many jurisdictions, so you work with many different agencies, so it's not, you know, we're unique with the Elk Grove Police Department having a partnership, but we know the district includes the city of Sacramento, Rancho Cudova, and the county, so the contract is there with the Sheriff's Department. But I can tell you that the remarks, the relationships, and all of the, you know, the positive relationships that were created, I respect all of the, you know, our sheriff partners, but Elk Grove PD always stood out above and beyond in the building that trust and those relationships. Our officers, I can tell you from just from back then, they always received high, high accolades. And as a parent, I know the importance of building those relationships and trust when they're much younger, like these young gentlemen that are here in the audience today. Building those relationships and trust when it's not related to enforcement of something or being heavy-handed, it's building that trust, and it happens when they're young. So those school resource officers, how they engage with the youth is so critical. And so I love all of the work that we are doing with our youth, and selfishly, obviously, I would love to see that contract with our police officers, because we do do an exceptional job with building that trust and relationships. And it starts with just recognizing and seeing our students when they show up at school, and knowing that they come from different walks of life, and they have different struggles and different journeys, and seeing the humanity at that level is so, so important. Our homeless outreach program, fabulous, seeing the results of that, so thank you again for that. Assistant Chief Solomon, the good news is that we're neighbors, kind of, we both live in Stone Lake, so I will see you around. But thank you so much for your service, your dedication and commitment to public safety and the safety of our community. It has not gone unnoticed, we thank you for all of your service and years of service, and we know that you won't be a stranger to our city. But thank you, a tremendous report, keep up the good work. You know, we talked about, how can we be preventative in some of these, some of these situations? And it's very hard, you can't, you know, how do you stop somebody, how do you build good relationships, how do you have a strong, happy, healthy family life where those tensions don't happen? But what I can say is that, you know, what I'm seeing in a lot of the education out there and with young leaders like this, that building character, building trust, and investing in our youth does pay dividends down the road. So hopefully, when they grow up, they're much more responsible humans and adults, and know how to channel their feelings and their anger. So I'm hopeful for the future, but it's not something that we can sit here and solve, we can't be all things to everyone, but I love and respect the work that we are doing to make sure that the victims feel, get the support that they so badly need in those very difficult, tense situations. So thank you all, Elk Grove Police Department, you're doing a fabulous job, and thank you to the voters of Elk Grove for Measure E funding, this is how we keep our community safe, so I want to thank everybody for that.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, thank you so very much, we're very appreciative, the women and men of this organization are proud to work here, and I'm proud to work with them, and you, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, so we will go on to our next item, which is our council comments, reports, and future agenda items. Councilmember Spees, anything?
Nothing to report, thank you.
Councilmember Brewer?
Tomorrow at 3 o'clock at the SAC County Administrative Offices, we have the Sacramento Public Library Joint Powers Authority Board Meeting. If you'd like to have more extra credit scouts, you can join us there. And then also, we have the Sacramento Sierra Building and Construction Trades Council, they have, with people working together, the career fair that is taking place at District 56.
Yep. Is that it?
That's all.
Councilmember Sun?
Well, on the subject of career fairs, I also have a different career fair on April 5th at CRC, so hopefully colleagues can show up for that as well, I suppose it's a couple of weeks away. Other than that, we had a sewer district meeting today, and we reported out, Harvest Water Project reported out, the calls that have come in, about 100 calls so far in the roads, so hopefully folks are learning to avoid the areas that they're still under construction. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As Councilmember Sun said, we did have sewer district. I understand the struggles, especially with the roads and everything that's happening, because I drive through Franklin every day, so bear with us. Also, I know that when we end, I would like to end in the honor of Officer, I don't want to butcher his name, but Osmar Rarte, who was the officer that lost his life in the line of duty in Marisville. He's also a Army veteran and a hero, had a lot to live in, and just wanted to end on that.
Thank you, I actually had that also on my list for adjourning in his memory. I will waive my report, but I do also want to adjourn in the memory of a longtime Old Town resident, Denise Walker, who was an ambassador with the Elk Grove Chamber. So both of, both of the loss of life is quite tragic, so may their memories be a blessing to all those that knew them. Thank you, everyone. With that, we will go ahead and adjourn at 8:57 PM.